All right, call the meeting to order any items from the public. Yes, sir.
Darryl Palmer was up here a few weeks ago. I thought maybe he was going to schedule this on the agenda for the Sheriff's Department regards to impound so we're not able to seem to get in the county. And I haven't heard anything back.
We're working on it, sir. I can assure you.
They got my phone number and everything, I hope.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Stephanie Phillips. I've been researching several topics to see how I could better serve our community. As you know, low-income housing and homelessness is on my agenda. I've requested more information from your receptionist Julie. One, I have asked all over town the estimated number of homeless in Berkeley County. No one has a clear answer. Two, is there a vacancy law in the city or the county? A woman on the phone, Diane at the sheriff's office gave me verbal okay to park in their parking lot. I find that to be very generous. Washington County is very tolerant of their homeless communities. Three, when did the regional jail expand its capacity? Some places convert older, cheaper hotels into long-term housing, filling to constant capacity, reducing their overhead, labor, et cetera. A 600 a month typical price for a studio apartment would increase their profitability, also hurting other visitors and people passing through the area to the higher-end expensive hotels, filling them up. I'm sure your Chamber of Commerce would agree this is great for the tourism business community. More information will be coming. On a more personal note, I would like to go on the record to say that you know that a person can be criminally charged, at least in some jurisdictions. A judge can find the case completely without merit and throw it out of court. However, if you are charged with a criminal activity, even if you're innocent and there's no merit, it will show up on your record. I find this hard to believe in a country that claims you're innocent until proven guilty, possibly limiting your work or living arrangements. In addition, you could have a landlord for any reason ask you to leave, give you 30 days notice. You could comply, but maybe they want to be insured that in case they'd like to sell or for any other reason they'd like to ensure and expedite the process, they can file an eviction notice and that too, if a person leaves within 30 days notice pays their rent on time, et cetera, et cetera, has done nothing criminal. They tend to have that on record that limits their ability to rent housing. I think we need to look into this because our country does say you're innocent until proven guilty and we are supposed to be afforded certain rights according to the United States Constitution. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you for having me here today.
State your name for the record, Tripp, please.
Name's John Samuel Tobin III. I go by the name of Tripp. Here representing Post 14 American Legion Baseball, I have a one-seat corporation that at one point in time thrived in this area, lost its grip to some travel ball associations and now is once again thriving. Just for my information, what kind of timeframe we have, so I know how to shorten this or how quick can I make it for you?
Go ahead. You're fine.
Couple minutes, 10 minutes?
Go ahead. If it gets too long, I'll cut you off.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I don't want to take too much of your time. I've come here today understanding that there could be some supplemental funds discussed later, maybe not particularly assigned to any individual entity at this time, but possibly some of that money would be set aside. So if I didn't plead my case today, it possibly could be possibly where I could miss an opportunity to help the youth of here, the community. I had a full page written, a lot of things, but I really just want to shoot from the hip on this at the moment and later have an opportunity to possibly come, get on the agenda and show some real effects of Legion baseball. But at the moment, without taking a lot of your time, just like to say a few things. One is that baseball's been tainted in the area, in the state, in the national level. Two, this travel ball association, things like that. And in that being said, it's become more of an elitist kind of program. Spoken with Councilman Dan, spoken with Eddie Goguenier himself, and there apparently has been some conversation about a possible sportsplex at some point in time, maybe at Packhorse Ford, correct? Not correct?
We've had conversations about the possibility and the economic impact and, you know, plus the advantages of the communities being able to use that in non-marketed times.
Right, right. So when you look at, when I go as a Legion baseball coach, head coach, PR, the whole nine yards, first have to find a facility to play. Legion baseball consists of basically 14 year olds up to 20. It can't be 20 this year. So a very influential age that we deal with. Legion baseball is very civic-minded, very health-minded, very stand for the pledge. There's not a whole lot of tolerance there. But anyway. So when you look at sportsplexes like that, when we go to put together a schedule, if you were to Google just real quickly West Virginia baseball tournaments, right, you're going to hear Bridgeport, you're going to hear Morgantown, you're going to hear Dunbar, you're going to hear Glenville. All those things have one thing in common. They have turf fields. The ability to play on a turf field allows you to play multiple games, allows you to play 24/7, allows you to play without damaging the field. Anybody's ever, you yourself, have dealt with fields. It's a huge maintenance issue. So when Legion first came back into existence, it was all I could do to get four high schools in the Berkeley County area to allow us to play. There's only four schools in that, four fields in the whole area that can house a 60-90 high school-sized field for that age group. That, in order to get on those fields, you have to first convince the coach, who has to convince the AD, who has to convince the principal, who has to convince the school board. One of those say nay, you don't play. Three of those four schools have said nay, somewhere along that line. Marnesburg High School, along with the PO Faulkner with the MHS boosters, has partnered up with the American Legion baseball team. Comes at a cost, extremely high cost. Myself, to the players, I have personally invested over $20,000 in the last five years. In the last five years, that field has taken on through investors, I mean, excuse me, boosters through donations, an $80,000 state-of-the-art scoreboard, the best in the state, state-of-the-art jumbotron, two state-of-the-art clubhouses, $100,000 hitting facility is over there. Just went over to the Hagerstown Suns and purchased 200 stadium seats and already starting to put together the concrete and all the infrastructure to get those seats and have stadium seating. This past year, $30,000 went into turfing the mound, turfing the baseline so that we can play more games this summer. So I've been allotted more times on that field. When you take this into consideration, all these things, this field is very close to being the best top-notch field in the state. When you look at my schedule this year for the Legion, you're going to see Dunbar, you're going to see Glenville, you're going to see Morgantown, you're going to see all these places at Bridgeport. Why? Because they're the places that are holding the tournaments, they're the places that have the facilities, they're the places that allow more than two games a day to be played on it. They're the teams that bring us in. So not that this is the development authority and we need to talk about the financial impact of it, but I still think that plays into it. Five weekends this year, I want to take 16 to 18 kids out of this town, stay in motels and eat for three to four nights. It could be done here. That's sort of a financial impact. But more importantly, the talk about the sportsplex, understand this, certainly it's a financial thing, but I would implore you to think about, understanding that's still a very elitist issue. When those travel teams come to town to play at your sportsplex, there's five of Dad's friends and two friends and two thousand dollars has been paid by these kids to play. The American Legion is not about that. We've never charged kids more than two hundred and fifty dollars, ever, ever. But we have no place to play. We have no place to play. And if you can get on the school board and say, hey, let these guys play there for free, then so be it. But there's no place for these young men to play. You know, we could go up here and talk about the investments that the council's made and what they thought was important. Recently, you did the aware program, fifty-five thousand dollars annual allotted, very good program. I don't want to put one thing against the other because they're all important, but we're also reaching fourteen to eighteen to nineteen-year-old kids. We're putting them in a pastime that slowly but surely in this area has declined nationally and now starting to come back. The city thought it important to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of money on Oatsdale Park, a little league park, that six guys sit on the board and tell you who can play on it. Six guys. The city give two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to turf two little league fields that only help a certain amount of people. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? They're going to get the state tournament this year. Once every six years, you get the state tournament. And I'm all for it, believe me, because I think it's going to influx. But they give two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the league that is the most declining league in. Edgesville and South Berkeley have the most enrollment, increased enrollment. Martinsburg has declining enrollment. Out of that cell, we have to talk to Dr. Queen, Mark Baldwin, I guess, about that. The fact of the matter is, they thought it was important to invest. So when you talk about building a sportsplex and spending millions and billions of dollars, I think the thought process, how are you going to compete against Martinsburg Little League with two turf fields? Okay, so the problem, what I was getting at here is that when you think about what we could do over there and how close we are to that field and what it can mean to this, what we can bring in instead of traveling five weeks a year, we could become, when you tap on tournaments in West Virginia, Martinsburg would show. So this could be a sampling of what could be, of what could be if you did the sportsplex. Certainly, there's a place for that. In my opinion, it's a financial place, but I'd love to see kids play baseball. But I have been to those tournaments, and I realize it's, if we went somewhere from Sandlot to Moneyball, somewhere along the line, somewhere along the line, we've left this behind. Somewhere along the line, it's costing me ten thousand dollars a year to play Legion baseball, and the kids barely have a glove. But anyway, I just want to play you one thing. It's one minute long, is that okay? One minute long. Kyle Ripken says stubbornness was seen as a negative.
We'll finish this up, Trip.
I'm going to finish it up for you. I'm going to play you one thing.
Let me ask you two questions real quick. You talked about all this, what kind of money are you talking about?
So this is, I mean, this is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment, but not that we're asking the county, we're asking the county to partner with us. We've spent three hundred thousand dollars in five years, so the ability to raise fifty, sixty grand a year inside the funds.
The second question is, are you planning to talk to the city about it? Because it is in the city, it is in the city limits, and obviously, the city has indicated that they're interested in investing in the ball fields out there, so it would make sense that they.
We're looking at development authority, community with Michael Walton, the city and you guys, and of course, our own self to try to make this happen. You know, Wheeling Park has just decided to put one point two million dollars into their field up in that county. It's fifty thousand dollars just to do the plans, just to plan it. They're putting fifty grand into it, okay? So you look at these things, and you can go on and do all these things, but I just wanted to show you something. Does anybody know who Chase Delauter is? Chase Delauter, top ten in the draft right now. This is what he had to say to the draft, to the draft team. This is what he has to say.
I've never been to like a perfect game or anything like that. To be honest, I really couldn't afford it. Growing up, playing travel ball, and obviously, where I'm from, it's a little bit smaller town, there's not really teams close that I could go to that went, I would say, the Go Wags, EA, or the Virgin Star, maybe, which is still in Virginia. But from West Virginia, there really wasn't like teams close by that I was able to just go play for that, go to perfect game and stuff like that. And then obviously, having two younger brothers and younger sister that also wanted to play sports, it was pretty hard, my parents, to be able to like work that out, like timing-wise. So I played for the West Virginia Athletics growing up, and we did cheer pieces that were more like tri-state area tournaments, or stuff like that. So me, it really wasn't like a crazy kind of, I was in front of a lot of colleges and scouts, but it was really just kind of playing for fun in the summer, and I think that just kind of carried on through high school. And my last year in high school, I really played Legion ball after I was committed to JNU, and I had a lot of fun with that as well.
You see the kid who come to play Legion ball because his parents didn't have the money, he had no place to go. He's going to be a top-ten in the draft this year. This area is rich in baseball, state championships, the most of any county, but we invested zero. I don't know if the Parks and Rec, the county council, or anyone that I can put my finger on that's ever put four bases down on a backstop, but no investment in baseball, soccer, football, tennis. How many basketball courts can we use and turn into gymnastics? But these kids go, and we're at eighty-eight percent since five years, eighty-eight percent of our kids went to college and stayed, seven percent didn't go to college at all, and five dropped out, just in our one team. So there is a return on it, but at this moment, it's sort of a, unfortunately, we have to build it. They will come at that point, then we can look at it. But I hope it would give, you know, we're not asking two hundred and fifty thousand, but we're asking for four or five entities to come together, make an investment, and we are this close. And I would have asked you to meet with me out there, walk it, you'll see that the seating, the clubhouse, the hitting facility, the turf that's down now, and the state-of-the-art scoreboard has got us this close to being the best field in the state, and also gives us a ten-year lease on that field if we were to invest and be partner with them at least ten years, if not longer, but I'm sure it will stay longer, only if everything goes well. But that's ten years, I don't have to beg for a field. Well, you guys decide whether to do a sportsplex or a county field, or whatever you want to do at that point. So it's sort of a, you know, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, what's the investment? I don't know, but I would hope it'd be a partnership investment from the city, the county, development, funding those types of things to see what we can do. I just ask you today that you consider it, as you set aside some money to possibly assign down the road, and I will definitely get on the agenda and bring you some other points to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trip. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. President, if there's no modifications or changes, I move we approve the agenda for Thursday, April the twenty-first.
Okay, motion been made. Do we have a second? Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Purchase orders, any questions on the purchase order?
Mr. President, if I could just point out a few things. On the very first page, you'll see a payment to Sunset Water. When we renovated and added on to eight oh two Emmett Roush Drive, for whatever reason, we did not put a whole building commercial water softener in there, and we've had some problems the past months with the big ice machine.
I was going to say, it'll eat that thing up.
It has. So we have put in a whole building, a water softener, and we've had the ice machine cleaned and serviced.
And all of our ice machines should be serviced once a year.
Yeah.
What kind of hot water system is in there? Is it an on-demand hot water system?
I don't think so.
It's a tank one, and if it's a tank one, that should be done as well, that tank should be cleaned as well.
Cleaned and flushed.
Yeah, so we did take care of that. On page six, which is a little further back, you'll see this is a big purchase order log, about two point five million. We are making.
Probably all went to health insurance.
Well, health insurance. We're also making our annual or semi-annual bond payment. You'll see, that's one point five million. That takes care of any of the payments that are due for this fiscal year, and we still have an unencumbered fund balance in that line, I have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then last but not least, on the very last page, three items from the, four items, two items from the bottom, I'm asking the council to remove the payment to Prigian Impressions in the amount of forty-one thousand ninety-four dollars. That's for voter registration mailings. They needed that money immediately, so we canceled it from this purchase order log. We've had a special purchase request for that, and Prigian Impressions already has their check for forty-one thousand. So as you approve the purchase order log, I ask that you do it with the removal of payment of forty-one thousand ninety-four dollars and eight cents for Prigian Impressions.
All right, let's go ahead and do the purchase order log. Nobody have any questions for Mr. Davis?
I do have a question, just basically a question of what the process is, that there's a lumber for a garage door in a steel building, the seven fifty Baltimore building that was purchased. What are they doing with lumber?
We're adding a door to that building so that we can get some of the sheriff's equipment in there at the council's direction. If you remember, the sheriff requested money to put a.
Lean to?
A lean to behind five-ten, and instead, we're moving all of that equipment to seven fifty.
So my question was really, why are we using lumber instead of steel on a steel building?
Didn't have to ask her facilities about that.
Because generally, when you add a door in, you just buy channel steel besides what's already in there.
Yeah, our guys are doing it, so I can't answer that.
Okay.
I guess it'll work. They did it before, this is the second door they put in, so.
Any other questions?
Do you want a motion to approve that?
Yeah, let's do the purchase order, motion to approve the purchase orders, less than.
Forty-one oh nine, four oh eight.
Yeah.
So moved?
Have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Davis, you have no internal budget revisions?
No, not today.
Have a few changes status. We have a new hire recommendation received from Honorable Larry Hess, assessor for the following: Ashley Connor as a transfer clerk with an annual salary of thirty-one thousand four twenty-nine effective April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. Yvonne McKenzie as a personal property clerk with an annual salary of thirty-one thousand four twenty-nine effective date is to be decided. New hire recommendation received from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Nathaniel Douglas Webb and Tyler Jacob Cooper as deputies with an annual salary of forty-five thousand six twenty-three effective April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Change in status received from Tim Zaya, Director of Community Corrections, for Douglas Webb. He is receiving an increase for certified firearm instructor. His salary will be going from forty-four thousand sixty-six dollars to forty-four thousand five sixty-six effective July first, two thousand twenty-one, and I checked into it, these are two different Douglas Webbs. So anybody have any questions for change in status?
The two deputies that are being hired completely staffs, all the uniform positions we have at the sheriff's, so this will bring us up to sixty-six uniformed deputies.
Okay.
First time ever. That's everybody.
I think at one point, we have, at one point, we have for like a couple days or something.
Yeah, it was really quick.
Back when, was it?
Labor master, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. We have managed to approve for April seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Counselperson Delia was not present, so there's any motion to.
President, we've reached a minute to make it seventh, twenty-two.
I got motion.
We have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
I'm staying for that one.
So April the twenty-eighth, we'll be here in the chambers at nine thirty a.m., and we'll be going for a tour of the new Clorox facility at one p.m. as a council. And currently, right now, there's no meetings for tonight on boards and commissions. The twenty-fifth, Monday, the twenty-fifth, one p.m. historical landmark, five p.m. water district. Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, one p.m. CBB, three p.m. senior services. Thursday, five p.m. library board, five p.m. ambulance authority. Any changes or corrections to the boards?
Yes, sir, there is. The historic landmarks now meets at four o'clock.
Okay.
I wonder who we scheduled times to the board.
Four o'clock. All right. We have a letter of endorsement for Black Draft Distillery for a grand opening this weekend, if that's right. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions or concerns with that?
Do we generally give a letter for an event that already has an alcohol license?
Apparently, there's some issues with ABC. He needed it just for this weekend.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't remember ever doing that before.
Yeah, it's kind of an unusual situation. He had already scheduled the grand opening, and there's been a slight glitch with the stadium. I got you, I can imagine.
All right. entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Second. Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. We have bid opening for the replacement of the roof on seven fifty Baltimore Street.
Yes, sir. The council has before you today bid opening for roof replacement, as well as the gutter and downspouts for seven fifty Baltimore Street, includes all the labor materials needed for approximately seventy thousand square feet of roofing. The original RFP did call for the replacement of the existing roof. We did indicate in the RFP that the roofing system may overlay the existing roof, or that they may use alternative options for replacement of the roof. We did request a minimum of a twenty-year warranty, also installation of commercial-grade box, gutter, and downspouts. The original RFP had three addendums issued. Addendum number one, added the option to quote on roof installation at time of roof replacement. Also added an option, there's a gas pipe on the roof, the option to scrape and paint the gas pipe. That addendum was issued as a result of the mandatory pre-bid conference. Addendum number two was issued that indicated that, that verified that we needed a third-party inspection to certify that NDL watertight warranty was in place, specified a minimum of R thirty roof insulation, preference for two-inch structural standing seam panels that indicated that the contractor was required to protect boxes and houses in the building, and that depending on the system, that the contractor would be required to get an engineer to evaluate the purlins, would support, existing purlins would support the proposed roofing system. And then addendum number three was issued to specify that we would need a material and payment bond. The RFP was direct distributed to fourteen roofing contracts. We did place it on the website and on various social media platforms, advertised in the March, Burb Journal on Tuesday, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. We do have certification publication on file. We did have a mandatory pre-bid conference, which was held in this building, in this room, beginning at ten o'clock a.m. on Monday, April fourth, twenty twenty-two. We had six roofing contractors attend. After the administrative portion of the pre-bid, Mr. Lang did take all the contractors to seven fifty Baltimore Street, where they took the remainder of the morning inspecting the roof and taking measurements. Bids were due no later than four o'clock p.m. on Wednesday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-two. We received three bids prior to the deadline. MBV Contract in West Virginia has offices in Martinsburg and Manassas, Virginia, Coke Services out of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and Blackstone Roofing out of Winchester, who actually submitted four different bids, one bid for roof hugger system, one bid for complete tear-off and re-roof, one bid for flute-filled single plywood re-roof, and one bid for a roof coating system. That's what we.
Mr. Davis, these options are stuff on the different types of roofing, actually, there'll be a committee forum to pick the best value for it.
The building committee will review, all we're doing today is reading the prices into the record, as you know, and then the building committee will review and hopefully make recommendations within the next several weeks. We did indicate to, the original RFP indicated that we wished the roof to be done immediately proof to be done immediately and be done within sixty days. Um, but we also acknowledged the fact that, um, we were willing to work with the contractors based on the material availability. We all know what that's like.
Something that obviously dug on that building committee, is there any other council members on?
No, sir.
I'd be okay to sit in on that.
That was great.
I'd do that just a little bit.
Be more than happy to include you.
All right, um. First one looks like, uh, the number one bid is H O U C K, Services out of Harrisburg, PA. Um, the price for the twenty year warranty on the, on the roof that they're proposing is, uh, five hundred and sixty one thousand, eight hundred dollars, five sixty one, eight hundred. And the cost to paint the gas, uh, pipeline is, uh, three thousand, five hundred dollars.
We're really gonna, we're really gonna see how good a deal that building was now, or it's, it has a slight, the roof has a slight hitch to it, except for the front part. The front part is flat.
All right.
It's actually, the, the roof replacement is over twice what we paid for the building it is.
NVB Contracting of West Virginia, um, and they are from Martinsburg, West Virginia, looks like. Um, right, lump sum, uh, bid that they're proposing is a thirty year warranty, um, eight hundred and two thousand, two hundred dollars, eight hundred and two thousand, two hundred dollars. Cost of painting the gas line would be included with the price, free. And they submitted another bid, which is, um, a thirty year warranty and the price on that is a million, sixty four, five sixty. A million, sixty four, five sixty. And again, a thirty year, and then their third option would be, um, a thirty year warranty. Let me see. This one, this was a thirty year option, um, and the price on this is a one million, two eighty six, three ten point ninety. Cost to add insulation under entire roof is two hundred and eighty thou. And again, the gas piping would be free of cost. And I guess the, is anybody here representing this company? No? All right, so we'll have to make a phone call. I'm, I'm sure that's a, it's an addition as the way it's stated. Bid number three.
More of those three A, three B, three C, three D.
And this is three A, Blackstone Roofing. And they are out of Winchester, Virginia. A twenty year warranty is eight eighty five and this is a tear off and a new system, leave existing insulation. It's eight eighty five for the twenty years, thirty years, nine thirty five. The R twenty insulation would be a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. The R thirty would be a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars and the cost to paint the gas line is twenty five hundred dollars. And this is the tear off and replace with new metal. And they gave, in the package, they also gave what, what the plans are, what's products. Uh, three B is, uh, EPDM flute fill system, um, is five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a twenty year warranty, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a thirty year warranty. The R twenty insulation is a hundred and twenty five thousand, the R thirty insulation is a hundred and seventy five thousand, and the cost to paint the gas lines is twenty five hundred dollars. Same company, Blackstone Roofing. Their third option is roof coating system, uh, it would be white in color, it would be five hundred and twenty five thousand dollars and actually there would be no option, and that's a twenty year warranty, no option on any insulation since it's not going to be taken off. Cost to paint the gas line, twenty five hundred dollars. And again, penny, that's Blackstone Roofing.
Let's see what kind of coating.
What, what, what type of roof coating are you talking about?
It would be a gacko system. Gacko roof coating.
All right. All right, well, one more. Oh, I'm sorry. Blackstone also gave, uh, option D. It's a roof hugger system, it's a re-roof. Um, the twenty years and R thirteen, um, that's nine hundred thousand, the thirty years, nine hundred and eighty thousand. A R twenties, a hundred and twenty five, R thirties, a hundred and seventy five, and the gas is two hundred, or twenty five hundred dollars. So, um, we have, um. And that looks like a layover, is that right?
Yeah.
All right. All right, we'll pass this on to the committee and we'll, uh, give this out. Thank y'all for bidding.
It's a big job.
A big building.
Pull that roof off, get back on there, not something you're gonna do in the next day, you know? It's a problem.
All right. All right, Mr. Hess, you're up. We have some exoneration for us, two personal property tax exoneration and one real estate, both of them, uh, is for, um, uh, office air. And at this time, I'm gonna hand this over to Council Vice President Whitaker, um, because I, I do, um, a little bit of work for Spring Valley Farm LLC.
Good, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, do you have, uh, do you have one for the persons, personal property exoneration? We had two, we had to correct for last week and, uh, as listed on there, uh, total month it's three hundred and forty dollars and seventy two cents for each.
Okay. Do we have a, uh, motion for the officer for?
Yes, sir, I make motion, we accept the, uh, assessor's, uh, report this morning with exoneration of three hundred and forty two dollars, seventy two cents.
Have most have a second?
Say.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed? Motion carries, number two.
Thank you. The only other thing I have is, uh, real estate. We had the correct, uh, farm, uh, application. Um, we had the house listed as rental and it was, that was being corrected, we had corrected, so we changed that. It's, uh, for nineteen hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty one cents.
Okay. Motion to approve the officer for the, uh, real estate?
Sure.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed? Motion carries.
That's all.
That's it?
Thanks.
All right, Chris, thank you very much.
Mr. Barnhart, if you do, the honors.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the only meeting I had this week was the Berkeley County Board of Health, or Berkeley Morgan Board of Health. It turned into a Zoom meeting because of the snow. Uh, yeah, three of the board members have to come from Berkeley Springs and not a problem in that weather. So we had a Zoom meeting. Um, we're, uh, still negotiating with the state to up the, uh, salary for nurses so they can hire a nurse. Uh, they got some LPNs and the nurse comes down from Berkeley Springs occasionally to do some stuff, I'm not sure what they can do. They're working on it. Maybe soon they'll come to a conclusion with the state cooperating.
Are they getting traction with that?
Well, they never know with the state, you know, how, we, we talk to the state. One, one agency says sure, and then another agency says no, you know? In Boone County, they can hire a nurse for twenty thousand dollars a year, you know? So, I don't, um, and, uh, of course, COVID is way down, so that's good. Uh, I think they're gonna open up the health department to traffic next month, so that'll be back to normal. And, uh, that's pretty much it.
All right.
That wasn't true. I know well for next few days. I didn't ask it. I would think it wouldn't be too long, but you mean, well, drilling permits?
Yeah.
Of course, in conjunction with the septic permit, if there is a septic. Um, I had, I would think not very long, because they're doing some, but not like it used to be. Not like when I was there, when I did a thousand here.
How long did it take that to happen?
Uh, I'd get it in a couple days. Because I was told that was the
Number one priority.
Okay. But that's not the way it is now, when they got five sanitarians.
Definitely not happening in a couple days, I can tell you that. All right. Mr. Delia.
Um, my Main Street Martinsburg meeting was, uh, postponed till next Monday, um, not due to the, uh, um, snow that we had, but due to, um, a lot of people were, uh, under the weather at that point and they didn't wanna have a large meeting and didn't have the Zoom option set up, so it was postponed till next Monday. Um, I did, uh, sit in on the airport authority meeting, but I'll let Jim talk about that since that's his board. Um, I was on the radio on, um, Tuesday, um, had the, uh, um, the great opportunity to discuss all the, um, all the financial, um, uh, accomplishments that this council has done over the past several years, um, went in detail while you guys were here laying the levy and, and, uh,
And we missed you.
And doing another, uh, financial, um, responsibility. Um, uh, I discussed that on the radio about, you know, us, uh, reducing levy rate a couple of times and reducing operating budgets and, and, uh, you know, the, how we, how we, uh, reduced the jail costs and how we're, um, you know, funding the recovery resource in the day report center and the home confinement, you know? A number of, uh, you know, how we redid the bonding for the county loans, that type of thing, so. No, it was good to have that conversation. I think they were, um, surprised when you go down the whole list and talk about everything that's been done in the past several years. So, that, that was, um, that was pretty much the, uh, um, list of it. I did have a Zoom meeting for the wine, um, event yesterday, um, which is coming along fairly well. We still have hesitation from, um, some of the wineries in West Virginia to come to a, an event, so.
Is that right?
Yeah, so, we'll figure it out.
Mr. Vice President Whitaker?
Yes, sir. My first meeting was with the Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority, kind of going through the agenda, the, they're at about sixty seven percent of their budget, which is pretty close. There's four open positions, uh, the second route driver should be ready next week for the, the second route, gosh, I can't remember what it is. The second route for the drivers coming next week. Uh, no old business and the proposed budget, um, they're adding an addition, uh, for healthcare for the employees to make us a little bit more competitive. We actually are, uh, of salary, the hourly rate of our drivers is, is actually more than what the school board pays. So, I don't know if you noticed, their buses down, you know, like at the school board offices.
Hundred seventeen dollars a day.
We are actually higher than them when it comes to, um, per hour and per, um, longevity.
But they have a benefit package.
Correct, and that's, that's why we're proposing the, um, the healthcare package to be that a little extra more enticing to get to longevity in employees. Uh, there's a bus procurement for two twelve passenger buses, which is, uh, not CDL required. Something over fifteen, you need CDL requirement, so it kind of went this route and they are actually, um, um, hopefully get those by the end of the year when they adopted a resolution for that purchase and with a couple other counties.
So are they allowed to have drivers that aren't CDL drivers? Because I, I know that the bus may not require it, but does the transit?
Does Transit Authority, uh, you know, it's a good question, I can't answer that one, other than that they will, um, I'm sure that's gonna be part of the
The reason I'm asking, I thought, it seems to me at one point that, that even their buses, they had CDL operators and maybe, I guess
There's a class A, B, and C licensing, so there, there might be whether or not they have to have the passenger endorsement, they have to have a CDL but not the passenger endorsement.
Over fifteen passengers.
Over fifteen passengers.
Maybe that.
Um, the third quarter ridership was down two percent, demand, on-demand driver was up fifty two percent over last year's third quarter. And we will be, uh, electing officers, uh, next month, so, or the slate to be presented for the, for the election. And we had two employees are nominated for, um, from our group with West Virginia Transit Excellence, so hopefully they will, uh, they will get picked again like our other two and they will be, uh, whisked off to, um, I think it was Glade Springs for that, uh, presentation. And, yep, and I had the airport authority, Dan, I'm gonna ask, um, I didn't, I thought I had my notes in my phone again, but I, I lost some of them.
Pretty impressive notes, young man.
And I, you see me trying to type them while they were talking. Should've just put it on record and recorded the meeting, but, uh, but anyway, the airport authority, uh, we met, uh, Harvard Zoom in, in person. Uh, of course, the weather was not cooperative on anybody's schedule there, but the, um, fuel sales were about average for this year. Uh, we do now have a, um, um, management of a jet aircraft at the property. Um, the school is, um, definitely, um, having the students, but, uh, there's little, little hiccup in there. What we're thinking about is some of the students are leaving, going to a more advanced avionics package in their airplanes and with what's coming up with the, um, the Shepherd College or Shepherd University's, um, collaboration with, uh, with the airport and Bravo Aviation for their aviation program, we really need to look into, um, seeing that what else is out there as far as, uh, cost wise for upgrading the, uh, the systems and the navigation or the avionics package.
All right.
That's about the gist of it.
Those, those planes, I think, I think both, those planes, aren't they in the sixty models?
Yes, they, uh, late sixties, early seventies.
Early seventies, late sixties.
Yeah, and there's There's not much that changes other than the old, the avionics packages is what, uh, brings them up to speed.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, the plane itself, but the avionics is, and those have, um, they have
We call the old steam.
Right, original avionics equipment in them, so.
Steam boiler gauge is what they're called.
One of the conversations was to upgrade one of them and the other one needs a bunch more to look into options about replacing that.
Right. There's a different inspection package whenever you use a plane for, um, instruction, there has to be, um, an inspection on every hundred hours versus one that's like if a private is, uh, is every year. So, whenever that, the maintenance is higher, of course, because of, of the reason for their, um, liability purposes, but, but it's moving along. liability purposes. But it's moving along. Um, it's, it's a strong board. It's a strong, um, business that the county has, has, decided to partner in with, uh, with the airport authority and, um, had, had a lot of help with, uh, you know, the vision that Dan had and the board members. And I hope we, uh, we continue down that path and collaborate even more with, um, educational programs out there.
So you're talking about the planes that were built in the 60s being upgraded?
Well, yeah, well, they've got two of them, and one of them needs a bunch more work to it. Like they're having money to break down, you know, regularly with it. So the thought process is trying, because it's still a valuable plane. So the thought process is try, try to sell that plane and get some money out of it. Use that money, um, to put about $30,000 into the other plane, which will bring it up to where it'll be a, uh, a decent trainer at that point. And then try to find something that's the next level to replace the one that they sold. And, um, and the issue is, most people today are looking to, you know, if you're going to buy a plane and get into flying, you want flat panels, you want electronic stuff. Those planes don't have electronics. So that's the idea, to get another plane that, you know, maybe has, uh, more complex. You know, you, you have to get separate endorsements to fly, you know, planes that have.
Have high performance, you have complex type performance, which one of gear comes up and when you can offer those.
The prop. I mean, if the prop is adjustable, you have to have that. So the idea is to get something a little more into those areas so that we can go into that next level and, and get those people that really want to.
Transition.
Yeah, because right now you can get to that, but you can go through the flight and you can't get to that, you can't get that endorsement.
That commercial level.
Right. So if you had that, you had to fly like 10 hours. So for example, if you, if you had your license and you flew, uh, well, just a 172 and you wanted to go to a, uh, maybe buy a 182 that had, uh, RG, a 182 RG that had retractable gear, you could come to the airport and fly in an airplane, um, and get that endorsement out of it so that you could, you could be rated to fly that plane. That's kind of the idea.
And commercial airlines are taking for pilots.
I was kind of just asking that question, like Torment, you're saying, well, you built in the 1960s, but you're getting upgraded.
Yeah, well, I was in the early 60s. Electronics and. I was built in the early 60s. Uh, uh, my upgrading is probably going to be happening here for.
New hip, new shoulder.
They start part at a time.
Your landing gear.
Landing gear works pretty good. All right, Mr. Kokener, let's move on.
Can you top that one, Eddie?
No, I'm just going to move on to business. Planning Commission, I had, I think it was four public hearings, uh, the other night. Of course, I mean, Linda really runs a, a very good meeting with Anna. She does, she has an excellent job. Got a, got a good board there. Uh, they're still working, the staff is still working on the ordinance. They're in the administrative phase of that ordinance right now. I'm not, I don't think that they will have it that much longer, uh, before we get, to get another look at it with the, the changes that have been made. The shore board, I met with them the other night. They're still, actually, the work has begun on the Jaredstown project on that pump station. They finally got a, got their crew back together and I understand everybody's happy and they're, they're working hard to get going again, so.
Yes, they have been good by several times.
Are they working on the lift station for the pipe 82 in front of it or?
Uh, right now, just the lift station. And of course, then they'll have to abandon the old treatment plant, uh, portable plant that sits there and do the boring underneath of the stream. On a, oh, no, yeah. That, at Midway on the north end, down around the Midway Mobile Haul Park, uh, that line extension, that, that work is, uh, I think it's still in engineering, but, um, that's a line that's, that's going to go down underneath the interstate and cross over to Brookstone to pick all that up as well. So that's a, that's a pretty major job there. And the, uh, Rosedale Cemetery Interceptor Line, that job is slated to be started in mid-May. Snyder Environmental, uh, will be doing that work. There are still issues with, uh, having, uh, getting pipe. So they're, they've got a guy that works on trying to locate pipe, uh, old country really.
Snyder Environmental is also doing the woods water treatment.
They've done several treatment facilities.
The Stormwater Board, they, uh, that, that crew participated in a roadside cleanup, which was the old skate park there on Raleigh Street, there at Thorndummer. There was a tremendous amount of debris, you know, through there. So they participated in that and also.
Isn't that private property?
Uh, it is. Um, but it's also been an high school. So I just think for the betterment of the whole community, they partnered with some other groups, maybe even the city, uh, as, as long, as well as the owner.
That was the question that was going to get in.
Yeah, I paid for the tipping fees, um, for that.
Who owns that?
I don't know. I don't know.
I think it's nice of them to let the skate park or wherever it is use it.
Yeah, and they, they need to do some work around the, the property itself to get it cleaned back up. There was some homeless activity going on there. Uh, they want to go in and clean out a lot of the brush so that hopefully that will be eliminated.
How's the, how is this? Are you, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
How's the sewer board, uh, are they, are they borrowing money to pay for all these upgrades? Are these private, uh, uh, private funded projects or how?
Honestly, I, I don't know exactly what's, what's going on there with their financial. I, I don't know. Uh, they seem to be very comfortable, uh, with their, uh, financial situation. Some of the bids that they have estimated actually came in less than what they anticipated. So they're able to take some of those funds, apply it to the next job. Between Mr. Kunkel and Mr. Rowe, they, they seem to be very comfortable, uh, with their finances.
So there's, so if, if, if I'm listening to what you're saying, I'm, I'm, in my mind, I'm saying, I'm thinking that they don't have any plans for increase in fees.
I have not heard that word spoken in a year and a half.
Good. That's good.
Uh, and also with the storm water, they, they participated in the tree planting, uh, for the 250th celebration. So that was another outreach that they did. And I guess about it.
Speaking of that, I got two, 25 trees that they post for tomorrow for a subdivision. I've got 200 for 25 trees.
All right, um, fire board met on Friday. I did not, was not able to attend. And I can tell you there was mainly that the, um, Baker Heights Volunteer Fire Station, or the fire station, I should say, is, uh, pretty much complete other than waiting for some detectors. And, um, that should be in this week coming. Right, so, um, and other than that, I think there was some speaking and talk about, uh, apparatus replacements, things of that nature. Um, but other than that, I think, I think it's going pretty good. And I did attend the Stormwater District Meeting along with, uh, Councilperson Kokener. So other than that, I think that's all I have to report on for boards and commissions. Our next agenda item, let me get to it. Or do we have any activity?
We do have a application for the Criminal Justice Board for Andre Henderson. Can I make arrangements to have him come in for an interview?
Then we have, uh, Mr. Hunter O'Neil, who has applied and put his name in for quite a few boards. I guess get him scheduled up as well.
Hunter, Hunter O'Neil.
All right, Mr. Davis, you have health insurance benefit renewals.
Yes, sir. Um, as the, the council can imagine, our health insurance renewals seem to become more and more complex every year. You know, a lot of moving parts and we actually started, um, some preliminary discussions with Highmark West Virginia back in September, so over six months ago. And, and that's actually by design. Um, as the coun, councils aware, there are very few options regarding, um, health insurance carriers in the state. We have, of course, Highmark, West Virginia, Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is the, the primary player in the, in the state. There has been some activity by United Healthcare, but they're really not, um, a viable alternative for, um, the Eastern Panhandle and PIA actually closed the door on any new counties and municipalities to join last year. So if you're in, you're in. If you're not in, you can't, you can't join. Um, and that's actually been experience driven. They've had some, some adverse loss experience and they're trying to, to, to kind of regroup, um, and stabilize their finances. MetLife, um, when we originally started, uh, discussions with MetLife, they had indicated a 9% increase. Um, and the rationale was, well, we've paid out more claims than we've collected in premium. And we said, well, we, because there isn't a lot of activity, we know what death claims have been paid. And we want to see the loss experience. We, we want, you know, prove to us that the 9% is justified. So back and forth and back and forth we went. Finally, they said, okay, fine. We can't give you the data you want, so we'll give you a flat renewal, but we'll only do it for one year. Despite Lynn's best efforts, we couldn't get a two-year contract, but they, they did agree to a flat rate renewal. We haven't had an increase with MetLife for a number of years.
And I would think that information was readily available.
And we can, we can sit down and calculate because we know how much we've paid, we know what attendant and employee death claims we've paid. So it won't be hard for us to calculate and we'll go, we'll go back at them.
So then we're just talking about our small group.
Well, and they're saying that, um, they don't, um, because we are, they, we consider, they consider us a small group. They don't individually grade us. That it's part of the, it's part of their larger book of business.
Right, exactly.
So a lot of insurance speak that at the end of the day, they couldn't support. So, um, we did get them down to a, as, as 0% increase. Vision Service Plan, which provides our vision coverage and Delta Dental, which provides our dental, they typically are real easy to work with and they readily provide us with loss experience. They agreed to a two-year contract with 0% increase. So it would be a two-year contract beginning July 1st of 2022 and running through June 30th, um, of 2024, which we're very, very pleased with. Delta Dental, we do have some network issues that we're working on. There's a, a provider here, uh, in Martinsburg who had participated in Delta Dental for many years, who have now decided, um, that, that they're not going to. And, um, it has to do with some discounting and things like that. So, um, Lynn and I, and we'll be working with Delta Dental and the provider and see if we can get everyone to, to come to terms on that. That's the only, um, issue with Delta Dental that we have to work with. Highmark, Blue Cross Blue Shield, this council has been very, very active, uh, in identifying areas, um, of, uh, unusual claims activity over the years. And as medical inflation has risen, has, and as you have made changes to, um, employee compensation levels, we've actually adjusted, um, deductibles and co-pays. If you remember, um, recently we went, we took our, what we call our high option, um, fully insured plan, which is the, um, they call it the Super Blue Plus Plan. We raised the, that deductible from 500 to 750, and we increased all of the other deductibles. Um, we've made some changes to copayments with health insurance. We've made some changes with, to copayments for prescription drug. And, you know, happy to say that that's been successful. Um, when we started negotiations and discussions with Highmark back in September, we were looking at about 14 and a half percent increase. Um, we went back and forth and back and forth and back and forth a couple of times and finally landed on an increase of 1.5% across the board, which is more than, more than justified. As we look at our claims experience, um, our facility inpatient, um, claims, um, continue to be pretty, um, pretty constant. We've actually seen a slight decrease in, um, facility inpatient claims that have been paid. Facility outpatient is, has actually gone up, um, considerably, uh, by almost 11%, but that's a good thing. Uh, we would absolutely prefer our employees to, to do outpatient care if they could rather than being, um, checked into a hospital. Uh, professional services are, are up slightly. We are at or below all of, um, high marks, benchmarks as they look at their total book of business for West Virginia, except for prescription drugs. We continue to, um, see, um, an increase in, in, in prescription drug use. Uh, prescrip, prescription drug claims actually went up 34.6% um, this past year. It, that, it amounts, our, the total, our total pharmacy claims is, as our, as a percentage of our total claims paid is 42.69%. So about 43% of total claims paid is for prescriptions. And it's, if you look at the number of prescriptions, particularly specialty prescriptions that are being used, all you have to do is turn the TV set on any given night and you can, you can see every, everything that's on TV is what's being prescribed. So, um, we will be working on, uh, trying to get that down, uh, over the next, um, the, the next year, we're, we're going to be looking at formularies and things like that. The, uh, the emergency room use, which had been a big problem for us in years past, is, is actually gone down. Um, we're seeing more and more employees using urgent care rather than going to, um, the, uh, the emergency room for care and also seeing an increase in the number of, uh, claims payments that are being made to primary care physicians, which means that the message is finally getting to our, uh, employees. Get, get yourself a, a primary care doctor, a family doctor, and go annually for, you know, for care and don't, don't go to the emergency room.
If I could ask you a question about that, uh, prescription, is that, is, is it the prescription cost that's up? Or is it the amount of, uh, prescriptions?
Both. Okay. When you take the total book of business, we have 400, and this is employees and dependents. We have 400 and, we have 443 total participants in the plan. Now, that not only includes, um, county employees and dependents, but it also includes, uh, ambulance authority, fire board, and development authority. Of that total, we had, we've had five claimants. I don't know whether it's employee or whether it's dependents, but we have five claimants that accounted for, uh, 25% of the claims. So for the most part, our employees are, are healthy. They're doing all the right things. But, um, we've talked about the, the changing, um, the changing demographics of our, our employees. We don't have a lot of turnover. Um, and of course, as our employees get older, you know, they're having, you know, pulmonary and cardio vascular issues. So, um, but it's important to note that of total claims paid, 25% of the total claims, um, was caused by five employees. So we were able to work with, um, with Blue Cross and Blue Shield without, you know, you know, I tell everybody the good news is we're still pretty small employer. The bad news is we're still a pretty small employer. So, um, through FMLA and some other things, we know who those claimants are, um, without violating HIPAA regulations. So we were able to work with Blue Cross and Blue Shield and say. without violating HIPAA regulations. So we were able to work with Blue Cross and Blue Shield and say, well, that high claimant no longer is, is here. We actually had one of the high dollar claimants. As you know, we lost some employee of the David Report Center that passed away due to COVID related problems, who had been on a ventilator for some time. Of course, that was a non-recurring high dollar related claim. So as a result, we were able to negotiate the renewal down to 1.5%, which I think is very, very fair. Again, Highmark was, although they've had some change in leadership, have been, have been very good in working with us. So my recommendation, our recommendation today, and Penny has been actively involved in these discussions, is that we renew the ancillary contracts with MetLife Vision Service Plan and Delta Dental at the, at the rates that we've been paying for a number of years. At, you know, with a one-year contract with MetLife, two-year contract with V S P and a two-year contract with Delta Dental. And that we also renew both the H R A contracts, which provides a 750 deductible, a $1,500 deductible and a $7,500 deductible. And the H S A contract, which has a $5,000 deductible at the rates that are reflected, which is 1.5%. As you consider that, we currently budget $8,300 per employee annually and it's built into the budget. This council has been very deliberate and very diligent in setting aside some monies in anticipation for healthcare increases that we really haven't seen that we've been able to negotiate. We've been able to keep down due to tweak, you know, deductibles and copayments and things like that. If you remember, two years ago, you budgeted $400,000 kind of as a buffer for renewals that we didn't need. We moved that money into the health insurance account. For the current fiscal year, you budgeted $250,000 for anticipated increases that we didn't need. So we've moved that into the health insurance account. For the past two years, once in November of 2020 and then again in December of 2021, Highmark gave us a kind of a one-month vacation, a month, one-month waiver of our premium at the direction with the concurrence of the council. We took that money that was budgeted and put in the, in the budgets and we built that money through. We did not charge the employees for their portion of the dependent care, but the county's portion of the cost for those two months, we also moved into your reserve account. So as a result of some, some, some good budgeting and some favorable renewals, we currently have about $1.4 million in reserve in our health insurance account and knowing that we replenish that every, every month when billing's come through. We're going to take another, on your purchase order log today was about $222,000 in bills. So even once that bill was paid, we're going to have about $1.2 million in reserves, which is a nice place to be because if you remember 15 years ago, we weren't paying our health insurance premiums. We were in some cases three or four months in a year. So we worked really, really hard to get that up to where it needs to be. So as far as funding goes, next year I have two recommendations for you, which is a little different than what we, than what we normally do. This year, we budgeted $8,300 per employee annually and that takes care of 100% of the premium for employee only. That's 100% of employee only health or group term life insurance, 100% of the employee only dental, 100% only the employee vision and 100% of the employee deductible, the $750 deductible, which we consider the high option. Anything above the $8,300, once the employees make the election, they pay, as you know, through payroll deduction on pre-tax basis because it is a cafeteria plan. In order to continue that level of funding, I'm requesting as the first option, that we increase at a minimum our employee funding contribution for next fiscal year from 8,300 to 8,500 dollars. That again continues to allow about 96% of our employees to get free health insurance. It doesn't cost them a penny. And Penny will tell you as part of employee orientation and when she goes through benefit enrollment, particularly those employees that, new employees that we hear from the outside, they're absolutely amazed that we continue to provide 100% of the coverage. I know that all of the council members at one time or another have had discussions with employees about the cost of dependent care. Our employees, depending on the options that they choose, pay anywhere from $500 a year for dependent vision to $10,000 a year if they take dependent health insurance, particularly the $750 deductible. We have employees that every year they change and we go through open enrollment and they can change their elections. So this year, they may have full family vision and no dental coverage at all. And then the whole family gets their eyes examined and then they get their glasses. Well, then next year during input enrollment, they'll drop vision and they'll get full family dental. And then everybody will go to the dentist and get their checkups and things like that. Which, which is fine. It works out well. What I'm recommending to the council is, is the second option for you to consider is instead of going to the minimum of 8,500 dollars, you consider increasing the county's contribution to health insurance to $10,000 next year. That would allow, and it would have zero impact on the budget. We have the funding available to do that. We currently have 34 employees that have dependent care. That would provide those 34 employees with a little bit of relief. It'd put $1,500 more in their pocket that they're not paying for, for dependent health insurance. But it also may give employees that just absolutely can't afford family vision or family dental, the opportunity to provide vision and dental to, to their dependents. Again, at no cost to them. We can do it. It would be, it would be, it would be budget neutral. As we move forward in subsequent years, even if we see an increase in the health insurance costs, we could just leave that at the $10,000 and the employees would just have to pay a little bit more out of pocket if we see future increases. But we're pretty, we're pretty comfortable with, with that and certainly like for you to consider that as an option.
So your, your, your thought process is out of the 443 people that we have, including our employees and fire board and planning and development authority, your thought process is that, because if you ran the numbers, 1,700 at 443, it ends up being 753,000. But naturally you only have 34 people, so you're thinking of a much smaller number.
If, if, we may pick up a few more people for the vision and dental dependent care, but I don't think as far as the health insurance costs, we're going to see that many. So I don't think it's, it's going to have a negligible impact. I really think that, you know, my estimates is going to be about $75,000.
All right. What's the wishes of the council?
I feel like he's got a couple left there.
Well, the first, I'd like for you to renew the contracts with the, with the four, with the four providers, MetLife, Vision or V S P, Delta Dental and Blue Cross as outlined.
Did you say someone?
Second. All right. So we have motion for a second. Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Your motion carries. And we restate your other option.
Option one would be to continue the minimum funding and increase the employer contribution for fiscal 2223 from 8,300 to 8,500. The second option is to increase the minimum funding for fiscal 2223 from 8,300 to 10,000.
Entertained. Motion, or you all want to talk about before you want to do the motion?
We can make a motion to, I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation to make the minimum 10,000.
All right. So have a motion for, we have a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I, I think it's, I think it's, I spoke to Mr. Davis several different times about this recently. It is a, it is a burden on a lot of our employees with that, who have families to be able to have family coverage. And if we can drive that cost down, which I think that we'll be able to do, I think it not only helps them, but it also helps our ability to recruit and retain our folks. So if we can do it, which Mr. Davis says that financially we're, we're strong in our insurance fund, I think we need to be able to do that.
So, so, and I agree with you, but I think that, I think Alan needs commended for, you know, the last, we've, we've started into, I know early on when I got into council, we, we started having some heavy conversations about healthcare and how, and it seemed like we started into this more different programs, looking at different programs, how to structure. And I think this is another part of it that, that continues to add to what Mr. Davis has been doing for the past several years. So I think it's, I think it's a great thing for the employees. I know back several years ago, they, one of the big issues we had were the, the younger employees that were coming into the sheriff's department couldn't, couldn't afford that that healthcare coverage.
For family.
Yeah, for the family side. So it was an issue there. I think, you know, I think it's very important to do, keep your eye on what's going on and try to continually massage that so that it, it works best for the, for the group.
We meet monthly, the second Tuesday of every month typically. And, and we go over our claims experience and what's working and what's not working and things like that. The other thing that I filled them in on as part of funding, we did get notification from hers that our employer contribution to hers, not deputy retirement system, but hers is actually dropping by a percent. So the other thing I intend to do is when we do state budget revision in early fiscal year, 2223 is actually reallocate some of that retirement money over to health insurance.
And, and you guys have done a lot of work to be able to get the salaries up where they need to be. I mean, this, this didn't happen just this year. You, you all have worked on that over the last probably four to five years of getting, getting our entire workforce, their salaries up, you know, to where
Competitive wages.
People, people are looking now. They're looking at coming here and staying here because the salaries are up. And if we can, if we can improve this insurance benefit, I, I think it, it's just like the cherry on the top. It's a big deal. I would, I would hate to, I would hate to have to tell my child, we can't take you to the dentist this year because I wasn't able to afford the dental program this year, but next year, you know, it's, it's all about their, their family's health to try and, and just make them healthy, you know, keep them healthy.
And you'd be surprised the number of candidates that people interview. Then we'll call and say, I have a candidate on the, on the edge about taking the position. Can you work the benefits plan before they make their final decision? It's an important factor in making your decision to come here.
All right. Top four question. All in favor? Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Lynn, do you have anything you want to add?
Yes, Lynn, you have anything you want to add?
I would like to say, I mean, just reiterate, everything that you have already said as far as you all have worked very hard and making the adjustments that need to be made to keep the rules livable. And not everybody does that. They don't take the easy way out for the year and then they get swayed in the following year. I think a little change that we've made this year, and it really doesn't have to do with any cost, but I think it's helped the employees is HIPAA with Highmark has gotten very, it used to be the agent could make the call and if they had all the birthday social security and stuff that I always get from you, you could talk to them about somebody's bill, but they've really tightened that up. So Mr. Davis and Penny have been very generous in letting me come here when somebody has an issue. We get on the phone, 10, 15 minutes, we've got it taken care of. Because before, Highmark had gotten to the point where I couldn't even get the employee form. They had to mail it to them to give me all the, I mean, sorry. And it would drag on for weeks. So they've let me come during the work time. We try to keep it very short and sweet. I don't know, Mr. Davis, you want to talk a little bit about the insurance, Aflac thing that I think?
Yeah, that's ancillary.
I think, I thank you all very much for your business and I really enjoy working with your staff. Penny's always right there if we have an issue.
Penny's good, isn't she?
Pardon me?
Penny's really good, isn't she? She's worth keeping for a little while.
Y'all have any questions?
Do you want to renew her contract?
Yeah, I think so, Jim. All right. Well, Lynn, it's always been a pleasure working with you and I know you put a lot of hard time and hard work into
It's my pleasure.
trying to make sure that we are taken care of and we appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Continue to do so.
I did forget one other thing with, with the recommendation. It's the very last paragraph. Our, we, we allow our employees to opt out of the coverage if they so choose. And it's been $4,000 for a, for a long time. The second, the other recommendation I, I made is if you decided to move the employer contribution to $10,000, that you also consider increasing the opt-out from $4,000 a year to $5,000 a year.
You want an amendment to the motion?
Separate.
No, that does affect, that, that does affect the budget quite heavily.
Well, it, it does. Well, it does, but it doesn't because we budget $10,000. And when they opt out, we're only paying half of that.
I'm, I'm just talking about recurring, recurring cost.
Right.
It's going to be, now, now we will be 400 something thousand, 500 something thousand dollars a year.
No, we're adding 1,500 to it.
No, we're adding 1,000 to the opt-out. And we only, how many employees opt out? 10 or 15? So we had 15. So it's only those employees that
I got you.
that may be on their, their, their spouse's coverage that don't, don't take care of. So it actually saves us money.
Yeah. All right. Somebody entertain a motion?
Second.
Motion been made. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
And that is a recruitment tool. I'll use our finance director. When we were in negotiations with Sherry, she was on her husband's health insurance. So we were able to say, well, you know, we're going to, you can, if you, if you opt out of the coverage, you can add $4,000 more to your pay. So that was, you know, that, sometimes that is the tipping point for some of our employment decisions.
I like the fact that Lynn, she's here in session. She's, she's a great asset for us. So we have employees that care through a major surgery or something and the bills start rolling in. We have an H R A, they don't understand them and they can take life insurance bills to go through. She's a great asset to, to take the time to meet with her employees. It's quite important to them. So they aren't stressing about what's happening within why they're getting paid. Sometimes it's a, it's a problem and she has to give them that. It's not just they don't understand.
Well, yeah.
We really appreciate all that she wants to say.
Health insurance is very complicated.
It can, yeah. They are. Insurance is complicated. So we appreciate what you're doing for us.
I think they do it on purpose.
They do.
Second that one.
All right. Let's take a quick break. We're going to come back. We're on late.
Jim's got to come over here. All right, we're back, we're back in session. Penny, you have a comment?
I do. I meant to say before we left and I had to answer you, make me think about it when I heard him. Thank for the benefits. I just want to let you know, and I don't know, Mr. Davis maybe not mentioned this, but the benefits that he was able to prevent you today, present to you today, to present, to give to the employees, is a lot to do with the relentless efforts on Mr. Davis's partner. He will say that the high market insurance increase started at nine percent when they presented to him originally, and he was able to negotiate that through many, many hours of negotiation with Highmark to get that down to the one percent increase, 1.5. Had he not done that, he would not be able to present those options to you today to give to the employees. So, I don't know if he told you that. I couldn't hear him, but if he did not, he'd spend many, many hours negotiating those rates down until the employees can get the extra benefits.
And not only for this year, but I think over the last three years, it would have been a combination of about thirty percent increase.
Absolutely, every year. Every year it is like that.
And he's...
That's what I'm sure I'll talk about to your technical team. It's not always telling you that.
And out of that thirty percent increase, Mr. Davis got, got it for the three years total, 1.5 percent. Because the last two years before that, you got to zero.
Yes.
So, we should probably keep him another year or two.
Bravo, bravo.
How good are you at negotiating vehicles?
We just lost four, just dropped five. Five of them on us. They canceled our five.
All right.
He has to call and deliver his, renew what he's in for.
All right, we kept some people long enough. I'm sorry I already done that. But next on our agenda is Jim Olet, Executive Director of Burke County Public Service, Water District Proclamation for Drinking Water Week. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the board for taking your time to allow us to come before you this morning and share something we believe is very important. Mr. Davis, thank you as always for your help, and Penny, nothing happens without you. So, thank you very much. Just to give you a quick background on Drinking Water Week, it was actually started in 1988 at the time when a great deal of legislation was being imparted upon the public water business. And what it gives us an opportunity to really share with folks is that we are actually in the public health and safety business. That is our primary objective in everything we do, and this is a great opportunity to share that with the public. And just as a couple notes of fact, we're up to over a hundred thousand people now that we serve in this county with water every day. So, we go into their lives, into their house, into their health and well-being on a continuous basis. And without us, without the water system, they wouldn't be quite as well off as they are. And it's interesting how in this past year, a couple of years, we all faced the consequences of this coronavirus and our pandemic that we had to, had to deal with. And if you recall, one of the most common things was to keep clean. To constantly wash your hands, to clean your surfaces. Obviously, water played a huge part in that variable. And once again, the whole purpose for the Drinking Water Week is to let folks know how important it is for what we do. And thank you for all your support in helping us to succeed and serve this community well. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I'll read into the proclamation on your behalf.
Absolutely.
This is the National Drinking Water Week, and it's a county council proclamation. Whereas, water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene, needs for the quality of life our citizens enjoy. And whereas, tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas, the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure, communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers tapped. And whereas, the coronavirus pandemic has shown a light on the importance of drinking water for health, hydration, and hygiene needs. And whereas, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas, the citizens of our county are called upon to help protect our sources of water from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the virtue of the authority vested in me as chairman of the county council, I do hereby proclaim May first through seventh, 2022, as Drinking Water Week. Douglas Copenhaver, Chairman of the County Council.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll drink good.
Thank you. And, you know, naturally, the water is our most valuable resource that we have. And you and all your employees and board has done a good job in maintaining the quality of water and trying to keep up with the growth that we're having.
Well, I tell you, the meetings, the number one thing is transport of the product to the consumer. I mean, it goes without saying that transport is the big problem. Treatment's fine, but transporting it is the real issue. That's what they really struggle with.
Would it even be more expensive if they had that truck?
Or carried by buckets. That'd be even more expensive.
That's true. If you'd like, I did provide to Mr. Davis just a summary of some things we have going on. I can be very brief if you'd like an opportunity to bring you up to speed on the tremendous activities we have undergoing as we speak in order to continue to provide the public health and the economy of our country.
Yeah, this, this is very important to us, so I would like for you to do that.
Sure. And please, I'll be as brief as you'd like. You'll let me know.
Yeah, I would like, yeah, I would like to move to adopt the proclamation of the Drinking Water Week.
Would you?
Yes, I would.
Okay, well, we have a motion for, we have a second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries. Okay. We got the green light, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Barnhart. You have in your packet just a summary of this PowerPoint that we kind of put together to share with folks as we try to bring them up to speed and all the things going on. I'll start with one of the best things we have. The good news is that you can't create what doesn't exist. And fortunately for our community, we do have the Potomac River as a source of water. And as Mr. Barnhart alluded to, it's, we can, we can get it, we can treat it. However, we have to transport it from where it is, which is north end of our county, you know, twenty-five miles down south to where it's also needed. So, it's one of our challenges. But at least we have the water. We could build pumps, pipe plants, but you can't produce it if it doesn't exist. Fortunately, we have it. Now, our challenge, the second slide you have is the number of customers we have today. And I apologize for the mathematical incorrection here. It's really a hundred percent that we've grown in the last twenty years, last generation. We've gone from fifteen thousand customers to now thirty thousand customers, twenty years. And you can see, that is a tremendous growth for a water supply. That doesn't normally happen. Which brings us to the third graph, which are our supply versus demand. This is where we can't create, well, we don't have the ability to produce. Our supply has been flat. We haven't expanded our treatment capacity. However, the demand pursuant to all the customers that have joined us here in our community is escalating at a rather significant rate. If you look at that graph, you can see about 2017, there was a significant differential in the rate of increase. Well, that's when Procter &amp; Gamble came online, and they started taking water. Even though we continue to add a thousand customers, the country, they take almost a million gallons a day, and that's equivalent to about five thousand houses. So, it was like we got inundated with a tremendous amount of demand over a short duration of time. And of course, we keep adding houses. We've been adding a thousand a year for the last four years. You know, you guys add a few more for people on wells, but you see it all of all the folks that are becoming a part of the water system, which we now have to have the capacity to provide them with that public health service.
So, what do you, what do you, what do you add the flat time from in 2019 to where it stayed?
Well, Procter &amp; Gamble kind of plateaued a little bit, and then they picked up again. So, they went up, stabilized, and they went up again. The other, the next slide we have is our water plants. We have to be able to, even though we have the river, we have to be able to produce the water. Fortunately, it's an endless supply, if you will. But in order to treat it, we, we have to expand our facility. We're just looking at, there's a picture of the river plant. River plant has a capacity of six million gallons a day that were approved to treat water from. We need to increase that. We've decided to increase it. Chairman Rowe gave us a directive not that long ago to say, okay, we've had a preliminary engineering report for some time, but we're gonna, we're gonna execute it. We're gonna start the final designs. We anticipate going from six to ten million gallons a day. However, it's gonna take some time, but we are hopeful to have it out to bid later this year, late in the fall, early winter.
And Jim, the plant itself, the physical plant, is large enough to go from six to ten. It's all the filtration system, right? That you gotta increase?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have two variables. We need more filtration capacity, and we need more sedimentation capacity. Fortunately, the intake structure, a lot of the pipes to get the water from the river to the plant have all been designed with the ability to go to ten without a lot of additional investment. So, it's kind of low-hanging fruit for us to go from the six to the ten. After that, we would have to make more.
For some reason, I was thinking it's up to twelve million a day.
Well, your memory is that correct. The intake structure that goes out into the river is rated at twelve million gallons a day. It's after that where the restrictions would occur to get to that level of treatment. But we're working on it. And so, that hopefully will take off. But as we all know, from conception to reality is so much time these days, and we can talk about how it is to get contractors and all the other variables with all this so-called found money being introduced into our society. There's gonna be a lot of people being asked to build a lot of facilities, and so the costs are gonna go up because it's very specialized work, and we all know what it's like getting materials. We are in a very dynamic world right now as we look to the pricing going forward and the timeline in which for us to construct these facilities. The next picture you see is a treatment building, and that is the rendition of the Bunker Hill treatment plant that we have under design. We're sixty percent through. We also anticipate having this out to bid in late fall, early winter. It is a, it is a replacement of the existing Bunker Hill facility, which is sixty years old now and quite antiquated. And our objective is to increase the capacity of that plant from about two to three million gallons a day to six million gallons a day. Now, we don't have the water, but we're gonna build it with the anticipation that we're gonna go out, we're gonna find more water supplies that we would bring to this facility, then have the ability to distribute to the population as it's needed.
But you do have other water sources that's being tested right now.
Yes, sir. We, we are engaged in the practice of trying to find some more, and we got a few things we're trying to work on. There's some water out there. We just have cooperation from others to allow us to access it.
No, I was gonna say, we got, so you're looking to increase the capacity at the Potomac River plant by four million. And what was your number in Bunker Hill possibly?
We're gonna go to six. That's the design criteria for the plant.
Right now, it's 1.3, you said.
Well, it's, you know, it all depends on the source of water. That's our problem. It's one million because we know that spring has actually fallen off to a bottom of one million a day during a drought period. So, it's hard to depend on water that you can't depend on. So, we figured, you know, normally, this time of year, we're fine getting two or three million.
So, you're looking to go from, hopefully, hopefully, one day, you're designing, let's put it that way. You're designing it to go from eight, from eight million to seventeen million gallons a day, not counting any increase from the city market.
Plus floor, plus, yeah, so another additional six or seven million is our hope.
Okay.
So, I got two questions for you. For one, the south end plant, does it make sense to partnership with somebody like the quarry, the stone quarry down there, to draw water from an area like that?
It does. They do de-water that facility, and they just discharge it into the Mill Creek, which brings no value to the community. We hope that we can negotiate and discuss some opportunities with them to serve their interest while simultaneously serving the interest of this community. We're under discussions with the hopes that something can be brought together for this community.
So, another question on the north end. Somebody came to me within the last two weeks that said there was a piece of property on the north end that has very large well on it. And, and they're willing to sell that property, and they asked me, would that be a value to the water department to, for a piece of property like that? And I said, well, I don't know if there, if there's a value there or not, if they're pulling the water close by from the river, if that makes a benefit or not. So...
Always talk. If you have somebody, we'd love to have a conversation if nothing else.
I will have them give you a call.
Thank you. That'd be great. We could use all kinds of opportunities if it's out there. The other thing, let's say we get this increase in capacity. We'll talk about distribution, but we also have to have water storage tanks. You have water here, and you need it down here. Well, you can't do it instantaneously. That's why this land sides are peppered with water storage tanks so that the water's available, especially for fire protection, emergency situations. When you have a water main break, you want storage in the area so that people can continue to be served by a supply while you make repairs. So, we have a number of them that we need to get completed. One of them is actually a new tank that we want to construct in the industrial zone, because right now, we have a multi-billion dollar company down there that's dependent on one tank. We would like to have some redundancy because everything in our world, our public health world, are providing water for manufacturing. You always want to have redundancy. So, we want another tank. We have a site selected. It's been approved to be able to proceed. We just need to bring everything together so we can begin construction of it. The Ridge Road tank, mostly you might be familiar with that little standpipe that's on the hill up there. That thing is so undersized for the needs of today and the future. We'd love to have that repaired or replaced in its entirety. We have a tank out in the Kearneyville area, the Liberty Tank, that is also undersized. There's a tremendous amount of people approaching us for development opportunities out in the Kearneyville area. Problem is, the tank's undersized, and we have one water main that transport waters numerous miles. And if anything happens to that, there's a lot of people out of water. So, we need a lot of additional infrastructure over there. The Ridgeway tank is that little golf ball you see when you come across the Virginia line. It's so undersized, and that area is growing also, and so we want to replace that one. But each one of these tanks is five, six million dollars. Yeah, and as Mr. Barnhart knows, we're having trouble because of all this infrastructure being constructed throughout the country. There's only so many people that build these sophisticated tanks. You don't go to the local hardware store and find the parts you need for these. So, they're all gonna be in demand. So, even if we were to secure a tank today, entering a contract, we're talking about two years before they could even arrive because their backlog of work is so great. It's part of our world today. We've got to deal with it.
Now, Jim, on the tanks that are undersized, I see where Shepherdstown has two tanks side by side. Would it make more sense to add a tank rather than to replace the tank?
Well, a lot of times, you have hydraulic overflow elevations, which are influenced by type of tank you use and where it's located. So, and like in the, in the case of the Liberty Tank, it costs more to paint that tank than it is just to build a brand-new one with more storage. So, your thought's not a bad one. If you have one, just add more. And that's, that's one way to do it, as long as you can get the hydraulics to be compatible with your existing system and where you want to be in the future.
It's not only volume, but the hydraulics itself.
There's two variables there. You're right. There's...
Doug, I represent Shepherdstown, and the reason they built two tanks, those are the only tanks they have in the system. So, if you think twenty years from the day the tank's constructed, you've got that. You gotta take the tank out of circulation to repaint it on the inside, and new structural and prepared update. So, they built, that's why they built two tanks instead of one.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that, Jim.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you. And just to give you some ideas of some of the distribution system we're working on, the next slide, the large area that's in the middle is... the next slide, the large area that's in the middle is Argos. And we've spent a lot of efforts in the last couple of years to get water from the river plant all the way down to about where the jail is on Route 9. We now need to take that water and be able to transport it further into the system, further towards Procter and Gamble and the, and the industrial zone. And so we have, we hope to have out to bid this summer 20,000 feet of large-size water main, which will allow us to help us convey water from where we have it to this point further into the system to where it's needed. So that's our, our most recent project we're gonna have out on the street. And then the next slide.
What size main is that, Jim?
It's predominantly 12-inch transmissions from the Pike Side area and parallel with Kelly Island Road, and then we're gonna replace the entire existing water main on Payne's Ford Road with a 16-inch water line.
Okay.
Because everything's connected to that Grubbs Corner Tank there, Mr. Chairman, and that's a very important component, so we want to be able to get water in and out of there efficiently and effectively. Right now, we depend on a 10-inch water main that's many, many years old, and a lot of people depend on that asset, which is undersized.
I was thinking 16-inch minimum.
Well, isn't it, isn't it designed for 16-inch all the way out to Tabor Station?
We are. When we bring it up there, we're gonna go all the way down Route 11 with 16-inch, and we're gonna try to bring some others from the south up. So we, we have a plan to really make the substantial areas just time.
And I think it's a good plan. I think you guys have a real good, real good plan to, to solve a bunch of problems for now and in the future.
Certainly. Thank you. And we're trying with time and money.
I get it. I get it.
And as you see in that other slide, we also have the location for that proposed industrial zone tank, which will kind of be on the opposite corner of the area from the Grubbs Corner Tank, so we'll have a great ability to provide water in all situations if we ever can get that built. The next one just shows a rendering down by the Bunker Hill Water Plant. We're gonna redo the plant, but now we're gonna have to get the water from inside the plant out to the distribution system. So we have to improve the water mains throughout that area. That's under design, and hopefully we'll have that out to bid in another 18 months or so. And then just as a little opportunity for future economic activity, if you look at south end of the county, unfortunately, a very small water line was put in on Route 11 years ago, but yet there's a lot of land down there that has the potential to be a significant location for a manufacturing facility or some other business. So eventually, we need to have an increased-size water main all the way from the Bunker Hill Plant heading south down to the Virginia Line, where we then open up that area for some opportunities. That's kind of farther down the road, but it's needed because what's there now is, is not only undersized, but it's also rather fragile. And then, Mr. Chairman, as you alluded to earlier, we're looking for more water. The last slide you see is kind of one that shows areas that have been identified as potential groundwater sources. We've been evaluating the area. We've, we've identified some locations. We'd really like to drill for wells. Sometimes it's hard to get cooperation from landowners because a lot of times they affiliate water with growth, and some people aren't encouraged by that, so we're having a hard time getting on there. And we do have four sites, and we are gonna go out and try to find what we can with those four locations that we've identified. We hope to have that underway this fall. And we do have the Springdale Farms Wells, which are, have proven to be a source of about 1 and 1/4 million gallons a day of sustainable water. The problem is, it's three or four miles from the plant. So part of our long-term picture is, as we're looking for various water sources, how is that one gonna play into transporting it from where it is to the plant and then be able to distribute it out to the customers? And there's a spreadsheet here with just a lot, I don't expect you to be able to read it, just gives you an idea that there's all these developments that are presently on our books as requests for water service. And when you summarize all of them that are in place today, it's another 2.1 million gallons a day that we would need to provide to facilitate the request that has become before us. So, and that's not, you know, what's coming tomorrow will be added to this list, so it just gives you an idea of the demand, where we are today with some stress on the system, with anticipated arrivals coming down, which is gonna stress the system even more, and hence the reason why we have all these needs for capital investment in order to actually be able to sustain the public health as well as provide opportunities for tomorrow. And that brings us to the summarized page with all the financial requirements we have going forward. You can see without really much effort, we're already up to 120 million in what we need just to get up to speed for today, not necessarily to meet the demands of tomorrow. But obviously, if we get these in place, we'll be positioned very well to be able to continue to sustain the opportunities that our county's experiencing.
This is a today's page, right?
Well, yeah, that's a good part, Mr. Barnhart. As we all know, when we put this together, 35,000 for Bunker Hill went to 40 million, I should say, 35 million went to 40 million, and we don't know what tomorrow brings with all the costs affiliated with these activities. I know we've seen a lot of bids come through different water systems in West Virginia, and it's not encouraging what we're seeing. It's reality. It's what we have. So our challenge is obviously to find the funding necessary to construct these facilities to serve our community, and our, our other simultaneous challenge is try not to overwhelm the rate structure for the customers. So we, we know that some have looked into opportunities to get some funding from far away in the federal government, I guess, local government. We're all waiting to see how that's all gonna shake out so that hopefully not the rate payer alone will bear the burden of all of these costs we have to incur. So that's something we'll be looking at, and I guess hopefully we'll find out more in the near future. One way or the other, this is not choice, though. These things that you see before you are necessary to sustain our water supply and continue to allow it to prosper. It's not low, it's not like it's a wish list. It's a mandatory obligation. We have to make these things occur. So hopefully, we can all work together to try to achieve this common objective to have a prosperous community that's well-served by water supply, that's redundant, resilient, and dependable in their all search, all situations that we may find ourselves in.
So these numbers, Jim, has been recently updated?
Uh, you know, Mr. Chairman, we could add to it. Like I was just saying, our latest, it's reasonably close for what you see here. It's been updated the last couple of months.
Yeah, and I'm already saying that because back six months ago, it was 76 million. Now it's 120 million.
Well, didn't have, didn't have the plan upgrade on that, that month.
That's correct, Mr. Lee. Yes, we added the river plant as something that we want to try to get ahead of the demand, and we know we have the water there, which other places, we don't know if we have the water yet.
Yeah.
So you're absolutely right. That was added to it. And, you know, I got 22 million down there for the river plant, but that's even gone north from there since we, I put this together a couple of months ago.
Do we have any engineering estimates on any of these projects?
Oh, yes, sir. We have them all.
Okay.
Actually, we've, we've retained the services of engineers for these activities. And that's why we keep getting these information that, you know, they'll be talking in a meeting, and all of a sudden, the price has gone up measurably.
And we all know you're lucky you even get pipe right now.
Yes, sir. It's remarkable. We're talking 15-month delays in some materials.
Right.
So thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I think it's important. I think obviously, we're all tied together by a common thread of a water supply in our community, and hopefully, we'll get it right, we'll get it well, and we'll be able to serve the future, and focus on that as our common objective. Thank you for your help, your support, and we'll see. I'm sure we'll be meeting a lot as regards to how we're gonna pay for all this, and how are we gonna be able to do what we can do.
When you speak about the future and, and building these plants, how far out in years would you be projecting before upgrades would have to be done again?
Well, the one good variable, as we spoke of earlier, we have the river plant, and that's the one that we really need to focus on as far as long-term source of supply for this community. So we've already realized that, you know, we can get to 10 without a huge investment, and we've already got plans how we'll be able to go beyond the 10, to get to 12, to get to 16. And we, I don't even have it in here, but we're just about to engage the services of our, our engineer to bring a water line all the way down along the railroad tracks from the river plant all the way into the Berkeley Station area and then further south. So to answer your question, you know, we're looking at what's reasonable for now, but I suppose if we get the 15 million gallons a day demand, we're gonna be visiting these subjects, I mean, years down the road, but we're gonna have to visit them again. But ultimately, as I said earlier, the only thing we know is that water's in the river. We don't know how much is somewhere else. So that'll be the plant that we look to expand and to be able to serve the community 50 years after we're all gone.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I was going with this, you know. What, what do you want to construct now to, to fill our needs into the, into the future, but how far into the future before?
Yeah, there's always that idea. How much do you spend now for something that may not come for a long time? So as I say, it's low-hanging fruit for us to go from 6 to 10 million gallons a day at the river plant. That's why we're gonna do that today. And the good news is, we have land up there also.
I mean, we're looking at probably additional 3,500 people a year moving in here. We, I know that we have industry looking here, which, you know, may in fact stress the system as well. So, I mean, I, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but I was just hoping that you say, I think that this would last us for 20 years before we'd need more upgrades, 50 years. Yeah, I don't know what the number is.
Yeah, 'cause I guess you'd never know the variable, what the demand's gonna be. Because you're right, tomorrow, what happens if a Procter and Gamble shows up again? That changes the dynamics of it much more quickly than if it was just more low water users coming to the community. So as I say, we're, we're trying to get what we know we can hopefully get, especially with the southern end of the town. If we can get some more water supply to bring to that plant, that'll buy a lot of time. And there is the, the variable of the city. They have a, a water supply there that is underutilized from what conventional wisdom says. So we've been talking to them about how we can come together as a concerted plan to serve this community. If they're sitting on an asset that's available, they may wish to want to partner with us to actually serve our, our community in an optimum manner. Those conversations are beginning, but they're doing a study as we speak to try to determine what is the capacity of their supply so they can have some substantial concrete empirical data on which to suggest what they might be able to provide for the community.
We're not in partnership with any of their, their water source other than being their largest customer.
Yes, sir. We are their largest customer.
But no, we have no ownership of those.
No, we just pay the debt on the Big Springs Plant 20%.
Because of being the customer.
Yeah, and, and they're very, very good. When we need more water, they're always available to give it to us. We're looking at a long-term plan. What is the long-term, and what is the asset that they have, and how can we incorporate it into the county as far as a holistic approach to providing water?
Mm-hmm. All right.
Well, thank you all very, very much.
We have a gentleman behind you that wants us.
I was wondering, Eddie asked what needs to be built first, and, and we talked about the river plant. But what has to be built is a new Bunker Hill plant that's 60 years old. It's a complete rebuild. We, they, they've been patching that thing up for decades. They, they, they can't even get parts now. They have to basically make it own parts. So that has to be done, and it's really not a growth issue. It, it's, it's a replacement issue.
It's the oldest plant in, in West Virginia, isn't it?
Yeah, it, it may be. I think the original Burke County PSD is the oldest PSD in West Virginia. Of course, it's a surviving entity of, of the merger that took place in 2001. So, yeah, a plant that's done a wonderful job, and I, I suspect that plants you build hopefully will get another 60 years.
It's funny that 60 years ago, that was state-of-the-art.
It was a state-of-the-art plant? Absolutely was.
It has the old Dalmatius Earth filter system in it.
They had big hopes for you 60 years ago.
Yeah, look at this, you know?
And, you know, the feeble spring, 10 months out of the year, the feeble spring will give you 4 million gallons a day.
Yep.
But it's so, you know, you, you, in a county that's growing, you gotta measure against sustained yield. So cars, you all know that. You've lived here, some of you were born here, lived here your whole life. You know what cars is. If you can drill a well and get water here, you come over here and you hit dry hole. You have to deal with it.
All right. Well, we certainly do appreciate, Jim, and everyone's efforts on what you did here today. We do want to pick up where we left off here today very soon.
Yes, sir.
Um, because it does affect us in.
Next week.
Next week is what we want to do.
You all agree.
All right? And, and because we need to know, you know? We need to start working more and more together in, in the county and know, I know some things that I think everything I know, you know, but I want to make sure. And, and I think I can answer some of Eddie's concerns about some of the things that I know that, that could be happening right now. All right? So we need, I guess one of the things we're, we're looking for is, it, it's good that you, it, it's very good, and it helps us out tremendously to see what you, you have here in front of you. But, but the next thing I would be asking for is a timeline, a general timeline, and most of us understand the, the supply and demand situation. But give us some idea of, of what we're looking at, because like you said, there's probably some customers out there that would like to have some water that, that's being told no right now. All right?
I was actually very surprised. I sit on the, on the farmland protection, and I was very surprised to find out that, that they can't have a, a well situated on, on a farm, piece of farmland protection that doesn't fall in their criteria, and I thought that was a little bit crazy myself, but.
Yeah, we've kind of been told the same.
What's that?
We've been told the same thing, that once it's in that protection zone, even an innocuous water supply isn't allowed to be in.
Can't even get an easement for a water line over something. We beat the clock on that several years ago. We acquired easements that are, there's no water pipe in them, but we got the easements before the land was put into farmland protection.
Yeah, we're, we're currently fully aware of that.
Yeah.
But just recently.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's, that's, that's definitely, and, and that's, that's another reason, you know, to point out what Doug's talking about, about creating a partnership so that we have meetings and we're on the same board or same table of what's going on and what's happening because we approved those, those farmlands into farmland protection. We, I realized that, you know, a road couldn't go through them either, and, you know, that's a, I didn't realize that when I first started on that board, and that's a crucial thing to a growing community is to look at these, these areas that are going to benefit the community down the road and say, you know what, maybe we shouldn't put that in farmland protection, you know?
You know, those are all federal regulations, but you're right. You stick it in there, a lot of good comes out of it, but your time, your ass.
But, but if we don't know about those aquifer areas that you're looking at, and we don't have those conversations, then we're likely to end up approving something that may cost us some grief down the road.
Please, anytime you'd like to get together, you know, love to, love to talk and spend time, and that's, that's the key variable, right? Spend some time together. We're always available.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I don't want you to get out here today without us thanking you and your staff for services that you do provide to us, and it, it's a big task to make sure that everybody, when they turn that faucet on, that they're getting good, clean, healthy water. That's, that's a, there's a lot of faucets. So.
Pressure, pressure is the problem.
Well, the pressure's on them to get the, the good water, too. That's what the pressure's on them to get the pressure. Yeah. But, but all your, all your crews, and from my past experiences, you know, your, your guys that work out in the field, they're tremendous. They're always willing to help. They're, when you need them, they're there, and, you know, thank you, Steve, for what, you know, you do with, and Brian and all those guys. You do very good work.
No, we thank you.
If you find a way to soften this water a little bit, everybody would appreciate that.
You don't want to pay the price for that.
Thanks, thanks for what you do.
Well, thank you. That's very kind of you to share that, because a lot of folks do work hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Just time, we need a motion to go into executive session for.
Economic Development and Personnel.
Yep. All right.
So I move. Any decisions coming out?
No.
Item from publishing?
No. All right. We're in executive session.
Do you want this back?
Um.
It's not going anywhere.
We're going to use food.
I did. I didn't. I pulled these out.
I'm gonna go get ready.
All right. Real quick. Good. All right, we're out of the executive session. We're back in legislature session. Next on our agenda is the Mr. Allen Davis supplemental funding.
And I know that no decisions will, no final decisions will be made today, but as part of our budget discussions back in January, February, and March, the council began having some preliminary discussions on maybe providing one-time supplemental funding for some of the, some of the agencies that may have been adversely impacted by COVID using some of the American Rescue Act funds. So as you went through discussions for the agencies, you said, well, let's, let's earmark or let's talk about, you know, 30,000 here or 10,000 there. So I kept a running total and, and I provided that in your read ahead just as a, just as a starting point. And it is provide some additional operating funds for the promotion of downtown Martinsburg. I know Mr. Whittaker had talked about providing some funding to the airport for next year's air show. You know, of course, the needs of community alternatives, the violence, we've had that discussion for a couple of years, as well as the Child Advocacy Center. The Apollo Civic Theater has received a, a number of, of grants and some, some money from the city of Martinsburg for some building needs. And appeared when they appeared before the council had asked for, excuse me, $245,000 to help out with the marquee and some other structural things that need to be done to the theater. Of course, the Boys and Girls Club is always in need and they're saying, you know, $5,000 will take care of a, of a child for a year.
A thousand dollars per child.
A thousand dollars per year. So this would take care of 25 more kids. Historic Morgan Cav, as we know, has been in a state of neglect for a while and with our 250th anniversary this year, just the need for some additional funding. Mills Oil, C cap, Hospice, Red Cross, CASA, Senior Services, there's a supplemental request. I will say that in the senior services request, there were some capital needs for the building. It came to my attention back in March that for whatever reason, the kitchen has never been heated or air conditioned. I didn't know that. So we've, we've put too many splits in the kitchen and I just signed off on all new flooring for the basement. So two of the, two of the items that were on their list has been, has been taken care of. And of course, we know EPTA was, was impacted by coronavirus and the reduction in leadership or leadership and ridership. Mr. Cope Haver received documentation from South Berkeley Volunteer Fire Company about some of their fundraising efforts and how they were impacted. So just discussion, you know, like I said, this is probably just the initial session. You may want to add one or two more.
I thought you wanted, you want to handle the volunteer fire department separate?
Well, what, what, one of the things that I'm thinking about, we can't just give money. I don't think so. Give money. To me, to me, I want them to prove that they lost revenue from not being able to have fundraiser events. Cause other than that, they've been made whole, I, I believe. And South Berkeley came to Mr. Davis a couple of months ago and started talking about it. And I will say that South Berkeley is the one volunteer does the most fundraising than any other. I think there are one or two of them that doesn't do already any fundraising, if any at all. So in order for, I felt Jim, to be fair, you know, you have to prove to the council on a five-year accounting of your, of your fundraising.
It could just be South Berkeley. I mean, Baker Heights has fundraising.
Very little.
Yeah, but they do have it or they used to.
They used to have bingo. I think they do try to have the one festival.
They have a cash bash, annual cash bash that generates, you know, pretty good sum of money for them that particular day, but.
And they can submit all the papers, you know, they have to just submit it in over a five-year period and show us.
Yeah, I don't know about, you know, Back Creek Valley, I don't know what they do.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that they've done a whole lot of anything, you know, maybe it's just some small stuff, but, but just like looking at South Berkeley's in particular. And, and they're back up every Friday night, they're doing bingo again, which they, they've been doing that very religiously for quite a while until they were shut down before COVID. I had a stutter start getting back on again, getting their members back and getting the folks back in the building. But one of the, one of the main concerns I had, and I spoke to Mr. Cope Haver about this, is that the agreement between the Fire Board and South Berkeley for them to get their new building, their responsibility was to purchase their next heavy piece of equipment. You know, there's currently a squad setting up there that they paid three quarters of a million dollars for, that they were figuring on their bingo money to help pay for. So it, it has been an impact to them and, you know, I don't know if we can.
Obligation.
Yeah, I don't know if we can make them 100% full, uh, full, but I'd really like to see us be able to help them.
And Baker Heights made the same commitment on their engine.
Yes, sir.
And basically we'll have to do the same when they get their station.
Yes.
Hedgesville has some fundraising that.
Yeah, they've been doing some stuff lately.
Barbecues and stuff like that.
I think to purchase and finish out their upstairs, you know, which will help generate them funds.
Right.
What about Hedgesville supplemental station there, make it to Woods? Any movement on that?
Uh, very little use.
Well, I mean, the woods is hollering.
They are.
Big time.
And Hedgesville will tell you, that's our fire station. Matter of fact, Hedgesville go for, if, if you gave two firefighters to each main station and substation, five days a week or 24/7/365, I guess, that they would not take two for the substation, they'd put four of them in the main station. So.
So I don't know.
Now you know why, stand strong.
If the council wants to establish some criteria and put the, put the word out that your, your solicitude.
Yeah, we need to do that.
Well, and there's some charitable, we have Forces With Hearts comes to mind. I'm sure it was impacted and it's a good organization. I just don't know who to contact.
What we would probably do is once you establish the criteria, place a lead notice and then we put something on social media and.
It'll cry out of the woods, yeah.
Oh yeah, you, you're gonna be.
So how much money are you thinking of putting aside? I mean, have you got, have you had that conversation yet?
No, we're waiting for you.
I'd, I'd be very, very, and, and I know it's, this is just me talking, I'd be very, I'd be very selective and I'd be very cautious.
Yeah, but there's some deserving organizations or nodes out there and it's not on this list.
Oh, I'm sure there is. These are, and this isn't my list.
No, I know, it's our list.
The council's list. But for example, we got a request for almost $2 million from Faith Christian Academy.
Faith Christian.
They want to build a building and they, the county could help come out with that.
A little bit.
But that's what I said, you've gotta, it's gotta be some criteria and.
Cause if they ask for it, you know, the, the church could ask for it because they're building a new school.
Right.
So to answer your question, Dan, I guess one of the things that we talked about very, very vaguely was a possibility somewhere between two to three million dollars.
So I was, and, and I'll tell you, I was thinking three and a half million, but.
Well, you're always the big spender.
Well.
I noticed that. Money means nothing to him.
I, I, I know, I know in my business that I never would have gotten anywhere if I hadn't invested.
Other people's money means nothing to him.
If I hadn't invested. So, you know, three and a half million dollars investment is, you know, is a, is a big investment, but it's investment in, in the community. And I think in, in the growth that we're having here, I think it would pay back.
Well, what I don't want to do is just.
What does Alan think we, he can afford?
I just don't want to give the Civic Theater $225,000.
My decision.
I, I want us to hold it and when the Civic Theater comes up with a project, they can, you know, invoices or something like that and spend and then, then give it to them. Give them $245,000, ain't gonna cut it.
I mean, if, if you talk, if you talk, did you guys go down a shopping list?
Yeah, well, just the one that we have on record, not saying that this is.
Where's that at? I haven't even looked at that. I looked at the read ahead, but not that.
I know you obviously didn't if you didn't know it was on the read ahead.
Well, I did.
There's, there's a few.
I'm saying, why are you all down there bickering?
Truthfully, these are tax dollars that, that came to us from the taxpayers. So to be able to put some of that money back out in the community, those tax dollars is important. I also know that there are infrastructure needs that we want to be able to leverage possibly other grant money that will further stretch our tax dollars.
Right.
So we have to find that balance.
So we have to find that balance and.
And and that's why I say, right now, I think three million dollars balance or three million dollars would be a fair balance right now. Because I I, that's one of the reasons why we weren't super fast to be able to get on the bandwagon and say, okay, we're gonna do this, this and this with the money. Because we knew, or at least, there's two reasons I I I won't want to get too excited about it. Is, um, number one, the restriction would would be lightened. Number two, the cost of any project right now with all this um.
Influence.
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say counterfeit money, because if we printed money like the federal government does, we'd be in prison. Uh, and that the the inflation is gonna cost, go through the roof, which is proven time after time. So hopefully, you know, you get a bigger bang for your buck. Not to be so fast to spend it unless you're the first one out of the dead on gates, you know?
So what you don't have on here is, uh, um, we talked about, and I guess you guys, that's what you were talking about when I came in, wasn't it? About the uh, um, uh, fire departments?
Yeah.
So what was the thought on the fire department?
Well, the thought on the fire department for me right now is you have to, that's the one we got from South Berkeley and and Don Combs did everything I asked him to do, give me a five-year history. So if you look at it, and it's all by by his accountant, accounting firm.
Right.
Um, uh, gross net, gross net, and that's how much they netted between them. And then I took the the three-year average. I screwed that up. My number's off. No, yeah, my number's off the, out. Big time. So you, so so must have some numbers stored in the calculator. So you take the three-year average and divide it by, or take the three-year average and then deduct what they, money they raised and take it off the average and then that would be what, to me, that they could be entitled to if you made them a hundred percent whole.
So what do you, what was that number?
Well, I screwed it up, to be honest with you. I'm telling everybody, I messed up.
I know. I'm I'm not surprised. If if the council decides to do that, I would recommend that we do it this fiscal year. That done as a long, some distribution um with a cover letter to let everyone know that this is, this is a one-time funding opportunity, because if you don't.
I think, I think, I think it's a bit, I think it's a bit of a mistake if you put it out um, just to say, hey, we're going to divide up this much money and, or we're got, we got this, you're gonna have, everybody, every one of these is gonna come back with more money.
No, that's why, that's why I wanted to be justifiable. You have to justify on this. You have to be just, you have to justify.
Be a good time maybe to disseminate this letter to the other numbers. So you haven't gotten a copy of this from Nick?
Well, no, it was sent to you.
Sent to me, yeah. Doug got his copy, but you could.
You want me to get copies for everybody?
Yeah.
Tracy, go ahead. She sent me an email.
What is it?
Um, she said, make sure you know that criteria is in line with ARPA rules. When you give money to an outside organization, if you're looking at giving ARPA money, if it's not ARPA money, you can do what you want.
Right.
Okay.
She'll get involved in the screening process. Um, just, I have a copy.
So what was the letter, Jim?
It it basically gave a rundown of everything that Nick has accomplished and what he wants to make happen to make the Airport Authority whole and how the um grateful he is that the council has, you know, supported the endeavors of the Airport Authority. And just still need a little bit more help, but once his five-year plan is to be fully self-sufficient in twenty twenty-five. It was, it was a very nice letter written, very, very.
Well, that, and that is what I was saying earlier, you know, I mean, they're, you know, they, if you're looking for return on the investments.
Yeah.
The 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 money that we've given the airport is small in comparison to what they've been able to do out there.
Yep.
Although it's it's more money than we've given a lot of people, but it's still small in comparison to what they're going to do. And and I I still believe that at some point, we're going to have flight service out of uh out of our airport. We're going to have a cargo company out there, you know?
Were you on a chain of text messages? Did you get those from Maria?
About the appreciation of, yeah, yeah, I s- I seen that. And and you know, they they thank me and it's not me, you know what I mean? It's everybody out there, you know what I mean?
Allegiant Air just started service from BWI to Nashville for the month of July, thirty-five dollars.
Where at? BWI to where? Is that right?
Thirty-five bucks.
Who's doing it?
Allegiant Air.
Out of Baltimore.
All right, so to answer your question, in year seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, the average net income from Raffles and Bingo was fifty-two thousand, five, sixty-two, oh, seven. So I took that average, after being corrected, took that average, less the money that they raised in two thousand twenty and twenty-one. In two thousand twenty, it would be a twenty-six thousand, two oh four, seventy-eight, and twenty-one would be forty-seven thousand, six, sixty-one, seventy-five to make them whole. So about seventy-five thousand dollars.
Right. So that's actually less than what you said you thought it was at one point.
Well, Mr. Combs thought it was a hundred thousand a year, he thought. Yeah, and and so, yeah.
And that's not, I I, and I don't think that's unreasonable. I mean, you know, I I had said that, you know, I can see a big need for Back Creek Valley because Back Creek Valley is, they're trying to talk about how they can do an addition on out there to be ready for, um, you know, the next step um of emergency services.
This is it. If you want to read them.
Well, I think, um, I think.
And and I get when you're tying it with, if you're going to tie it with just whatever you lost, and most of these people are looking at the same thing, tying it with what they lost, but i- if you, if you look at the senior services, I mean, one of the things she's talking about is blinds. You know, I mean, blinds aren't in on the loss, you know?
I asked Tracy to come over when, um.
After the interest.
The CARES Act Fund, she didn't really think better to do anyway. Um, when the CARES Act Fund was released, she became our in-house expert on all things CARES. At a certain point where she was advising, she was advising the um, the the state of West Virginia on how we're doing CARES Act drawdown and things like that. Um, she is now, in addition to becoming the expert on Samsung brands.
Samsung?
Samsung. Substance, blah, 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 news, blah, blah, blah. It's that four million dollar grant, which is the most.
It's not that four million dollar 5G stuff from Samsung, okay?
Um, she's also our in-house expert when it comes to American Rescue Funds. Um, can you explain to the council, the council's trying to, wants to return some of the American Rescue Fund Act monies to the community? Can you let them know some of the criteria that's in place?
Um, you can give some ARPA money to um nonprofit and it's for their loss that had affected them. Like, I heard you say blinds?
Right.
Somebody's, yeah. Um, no, it's for.
They came by a new van with it.
They can do what they want with it, but when they're.
But their request can't say we need a van.
No.
It's all tied to loss of revenue.
It's all tied to loss of revenue.
And that's what I, that's what I did with with Don Combs of South Berkeley. You got to prove to me, give me five years of accounting on your fundraising alone, gross versus net. And then, and so their average fundraising was fifty-two thousand, five, sixty-two, oh, seven in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. In two thousand twenty was twenty-six thousand, three, fifty-seven, so to make them whole on their average would be twenty-six thousand, two oh four, seventy-eight. And twenty-one, they only done four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and make, or make them whole, that'd be forty-seven thousand, six, sixty-one, seventy-five. Something like that is very acceptable.
Mm-hmm.
And that was provided by their CPA firm.
Yes.
Independent firm.
Yes, because when, when, I'm sorry, when we go to do, we do quarterly reporting and when we go to report that you expended money, I have to say where it was spent and why. So if it went to um a nonprofit, I have to say that that is for the loss of revenue. And then that's all the reporting that has to be done for that nonprofit.
Right, so, but, okay, uh, I mean, there's, there's many different ways to look at that exact statement that you're saying. And for example, the senior services had loss of revenue um in three different areas that was fairly large. But they had income from other areas that was enough to offset that, but they still had loss of revenue. So if you're reporting loss of revenue, they could show loss of revenue because of those areas. Although they did have enough to balance their budget without um offsetting that. That's not to say that they wouldn't have got that money anyway. If they wouldn't have lost that revenue, they would have had that much more to begin with. You know, so there's, there's an argument on that side, I mean, to to be able to justify the amount, the dollar amount. You can justify the dollar amount and they use that money to do what they want with it. So, I mean, there's, there's an argument, there, there's an argument in discussing, you're, you're smart enough, way smart enough uh, to figure out what I'm talking about.
The feds. To us, twenty-three million dollars is a lot of money. To the feds, it's nothing.
Right.
But at the same time, I don't want to put Tracy's position where we're using that money for anything other than. And they have, they have problem with the the regulations since, I mean, originally it was waters who were, you know, so I think we can, we could probably develop a form, don't you think? That if the council decides they want to pursue this, we could send it out and say.
I have, I have one on my hard drive.
Well, there you go. I should have already known that.
And then, and then there was a committee, I'm sorry, Jim.
And I would like to have Tracy's spare time set on that.
Absolutely.
If the senior center said they lost fifty thousand dollars, we give them a check for fifty thousand dollars. They spend the fifty thousand dollars any way they want, or do they have to coordinate it?
I will go back and read the rules.
I would almost think that they could spend it the way they want because of loss of revenue that wasn't coming from a certain.
Right, it's just to replace.
Yeah.
But I think Dan's question, or Dan's statement, more so than a question of legitimate concern.
Am I right with the way I, with I, with the way I phrase that?
Don't give it credit.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm serious. It's probably a little gray.
Well, there's, there's reason to be qu- uh, be questioned. You can't be made whole twice, I don't think.
You know, it, but what happens, Dan, if I show that I've had a reduction in revenue twenty-five percent, but my expenses went down by fifty and I actually net out at the end of the year in better shape than I would have if I would have been fully funded.
And and we're talking apples and oranges here because you're talking, I'm, I'm not talking about the expenses because they, they're, that's another part of the equation. What I'm talking about is, is, you know, revenue coming in from certain sources. You show a loss of income from those sources. Just because you picked it up somewhere else or you did fundraising or whatever you did to get more money, doesn't mean that you wouldn't have done that anyway.
Right.
So, so to show.
Parks and Rec would be an excellent example. Parks and Rec would be an excellent example of that. Where they took a hit, but their expenses went down because they, you know.
Right. They still took a hit at the end, but yet it's not as the size that.
Yeah, and they got income from, let's say, the health department renting the building for shots.
Right.
You know, which, but.
Yeah, you know.
Tracy, I know they, when they, as part of one broadening, they use of this, they said we could use this, correct me if I'm wrong, we could use this on capital programs that um promote social distancing and things like that. Would, would a park be eligible?
Um, they do include parks to promote outdoor recreation. Yeah. I haven't, I I haven't marked it yet.
Well, only because that's where a lot of the activity had increased, was outside, outdoor activities.
For sure, yeah.
I mean, that's why, that's why you can't buy a Ford or a Saab Buster.
So everybody gave me their reason, but you about my question.
We were given our time to think.
Are you trying to say we're.
I think somebody's trying to influence your decision.
Was trying to dodge the question, but I I do understand it. Um, they could, if if they showed an impact of COVID that they lost money, then that's where you could show them money. Regardless of whether they went to another source.
Right.
Um, they were forced to another source, so they could still justify the loss of impact to COVID.
Has the Fed given us any guidance on getting the word out to the community that this funding may be available?
Um.
Or they're just saying, kind of?
They're just kind of saying, as long, as long as the end result is in compliance when we go to report, then it's, it's fine.
Okay. How about in the next, and we have to have the funds committed by the end of?
Twenty twenty-four?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty, twenty twenty-four.
So we have, we have time.
I think.
Would it be agreeable to the council of Tracy and I and Penny meet? How consumed are you with this, this other grant?
I I can be a little flexible for this.
But it's due when?
It's not due until seventeenth. I can be flexible.
Of May?
Yeah.
Okay. So in the next couple of weeks, we'll get together and we'll put together some general guidelines and then come back to the council on, or recommended approach to getting the word out as, as well as maybe almost like an applicant, you said you've got like a form or an application.
When do you, when do you want to, um? I think we need to, within the next couple of weeks, we need to come up with an amount.
So, so you, you then, you answered my question on one fire department. I said fire departments and you came up with seventy couple thousand.
Well.
So, so are we thinking like three hundred thousand dollars in, for fire departments and be able to, you know, be able to justify that between the fire department?
My thing was, I I think my, my calculation or my thought process right now, you have to justify that you lost the money.
Right.
Right? So to me, um, I think each one of them makes applications if they want to and give us the criteria that they could prove without a doubt that that's the money that they lost.
Well, and but my, my, but my point was, there's different ways to prove you lost money. Just because you go out and, you know, somebody else gives you money or you work to get money in a different source, that doesn't mean you didn't lose the money.
Well, I'm saying from fundraising is what I said, but and then there's another way to look at it, to say you can give each fire department allocation equally across the board and then you can reevaluate the money that they lost as a fundraiser, because that's the, they, they have very few ways of raising money.
But I don't think that would be American Rescue.
We just can't give them money. I know.
You can't just give them money. They have to, there, there has to be a reason you're doing that.
Well, we can go into Alan's piggyback and find some more money.
But so, so, you know, it's, it's all about, to me, is that we need to be shown where you lost the revenue to be the honest. And they can do that, then then we'll look at it.
I would recommend between now and the next time we meet, or the next time you meet to discuss this, that you think about the total aggregate amount.
The cap.
Cap. But then you think about the cap that you want to put on any one request. What happens if I come in and say, you, the council says, well, we're gonna cap it at two million dollars? And I come in and I say, well, I lost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in two years. You don't want to give me seven fifty and then give everybody else the problem, so I would think about an individual and an aggregate cap.
I think we should have those conversations about it though. I mean, i- i- about that loss that you're talking about. Because if you, if you look at, if you look at that, that actual amount, that doesn't mean we're gonna give seven hundred and fifty thousand, but I. But I think that we, we could dissect that amount and say, you know what? We can, we can justify, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand or something like that about, about that.
I think, I think the committee would be the first step to look at the, not only to, to create the application, but to review the application, maybe come back and give a recommendation, then we can talk individual of each one. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If you say, no, you can't, you gotta cap it at this, like they came with two million dollars, that's never gonna happen. To be honest with you, I don't think we should give any church any money.
Okay.
You know what I mean? That's my opinion.
Good.
But.
Then you could just set it up for you and Tracy.
Because every church is going to want money, and then how do you divide that up? You know what I mean? I think, you know, I think that, I think that's a walk down the wrong path myself.
All right, so number one, a cap. Number two, an application form.
Tracy has one that we'll start with.
And number three, develop a, a committee to review with the recommendations the council. Right?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy.
Thanks, Trace. You feeling better?
Very much.
Good, good to have you back.
Anything else?
No, sir. Ready for Kevin?
All right, I'm gonna go to rest real quick.
When Kevin gets ready.
I know how long it takes.
Ready to get ready. Do you want to go down and, you want to go down in the?
Audience?
In the audience or? And they have the, they have. Hi, Kevin.
Afternoon.
Hi, Eddie.
Hi, Eddie, how are you?
Good. Get all your hose dug?
Did it. Just done my dresses off about four hours ago.
Rinsed and trust?
None of the came with the kit.
Oh, okay.
AB, to give him up at.
APM.
AB Martin, to give him up at. APM?
Up that direction. It's a, they manufacture it.
Now, did you mix your concrete by hand, or did you?
I did, I did six bags.
And said to have it.
On the truck and drove to the, said, hey, I need to rent that, please. So I did six bags in about an hour and ten minutes, and I did the other ninety-six bags in about four hours.
I should have told you, I did have a mixer for the back of a three-point hitch tractor.
Really?
Yeah.
I need to, I need to mix my hundred and fifty more bags.
Okay. It's, yeah, it's, it's, it's a small one, it's not real big.
This.
And it's got a hydraulic cylinder that'll tilt it once you, it'll roll it, and tilt it out for you and then suck it back in.
You seem surprised.
Toys.
Yeah, it does.
You go at.
I've always had to work with these damn toys, you know? You've never given me a toy that I had fun with.
That building, he's got highs all over it. You just turn around in the corner, it's like Shangri-La.
But no, it's hurt the house.
How'd we go with Tim this morning?
Just on back of it, just PTO and three-point.
Really well. Yeah, now the shaft comes out, make sure it runs pretty straight, because sometimes you go to dump it, it kicks the, kicks the shaft up. It makes, it makes it kind of sound funny.
Right.
But it's all, you know, it's all greased and everything, but, yeah, whenever you, it's one cylinder, one line. So it free falls to empty, but it'll suck it back in. So you have to figure out which, which one of the, uh.
Don't run off now, you're starting to have fun.
No, we're going up here. You just gotta figure out what kind of bling dough to hook it into on your tractor. But yeah, it's, it'll hold, it usually holds about three eighty-pound bags or three.
Yes, three's more than a man is. Your bucket, I think I put seven bags in it.
Oh, yeah.
God, that thing's nice.
Yeah, it works pretty good.
It sure does. He's got, you're around in front of the block, you just dump in it, run over to your hole, shut the lid, and you're like.
Concrete bucket for skid steers.
I've always been a wheelbarrow. Yeah, this beach, I got a wheelbarrow, Eddie.
Now, a friend of mine had a concrete mix that went on the front of the skid steer. So you would need two skid steers, and you sit there and roll the barrel back and forth and dump them in.
I guess you're gonna do a big job.
Yeah. But mine, like I said, it works perfect on back of the three-point hitch.
BA Fred, BA.
You can just sit there and see how much square foot concrete.
Twelve months.
All right, I'll drive. It's gonna be, uh.
We got Dan out in the hallway yet, Kevin, so if he can go back in, we'll get started.
You see that okay?
Two trucks.
We got some printouts too.
Two seven, one sixteen, six nine, sixty.
Well, the dim the lights, you mean?
Put a scene right in the middle. Just four pores? Three, three at a time? If you're by yourself, read that out.
No, I'll have some.
My name's Kevin Whitney, I'm from Craft Tree World of Architects. Uh, thank you for having me here today. We are here to talk about the proposed addition to the health department overrun Waverly Court. What we have up, up here is the, is the site plan. Interstate eighty, eighty-one runs up on the, along the upper portion of the screen. Waverly Court is, is down along the bottom. As you enter the site today, you, you, you enter from down off the view a little bit. You loop into the parking lot and loop through. Currently, in, in this area right here, there are a couple of storage sheds that they're utilizing for some of the materials as well as dumpsters. The existing building is located in the, is, is the light tan. The proposed addition is in, is in the yellow. The addition is, is, is two stories. It also has an enclosed link that connects to an existing corridor that runs through the existing building. This also has a, a vehicle drop-off, which they don't have now. So afternoons like this, in climate weather, if there's somebody, a visitor coming to visit the building, they can simply drive through the parking lot, be dropped off, and a, and a covered, covered canopy along the sidewalk there, and then the car can proceed back to, to, to the parking lot. There is, um, I guess some, some minor, minor planting that we're proposing along the, along the building edge, as well as there's a, the, the building's gonna have a, a whole-house generator to back up all their systems. So we have a, a planting fence and, and a, a planted area around their dumpster location that's, that's right, right on the front, so it's easy access for trash disposal.
And you'll notice we've eliminated the tower.
Yes.
The tower is no longer required.
Is that that square block out back?
No, no, the tower.
Still, oh, oh, sorry.
The tower's right where.
Right.
The tower's, the tower, right now, Jim, is right, right here.
Okay. That's that pretty blue glowing light that's still on it.
So, good afternoon, Mr. Kearns, how you doing?
Have you seen this picture?
What's your place?
He's been very much involved.
Um, just one question. The existing building, that'll be environmental, and the new building will be clinical, or what?
Correct.
That's how it would be?
Yes, all the, all the health department functions are gonna move into the, and all the self-keeping.
And the reason why.
Don't you sit on that board?
Yeah, we haven't gone over this, no.
And the reason, the reason why, the reason why that is, Jim, is because doing it this way, there's no disturbance to the operation as it is today. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
Pretty much be turnkey on completion.
Right, right. I think there's gonna be a pos, actually, right now, the sanitarians don't need the whole existing building. There may be some storage and stuff for the clinical side there, if I'm, if I remember me correctly, right? Okay.
Does that mean we're gonna make a stipulation that he can't keep the shed this time?
Yes.
Your keep is one shed.
There's gonna be a building there.
Right, Bill? You want to keep one shed?
One shed, yes, that houses our portable generator.
You can get rid of that one.
Well, because you can't have gas in the building. All right.
First floor? Okay, first floor, this is our, our drop-off, drop-off area that I pointed out. One, one thing of note, because of the existing grade sloping away from the building on that side, new, the new addition is gonna be two feet lower than, than the main addition. So you'll see there are a couple steps here, but there's also, which isn't really showing up in, in the detail here, there's gonna be an ADA handicap ramp that makes this whole plaza out front accessible. Uh, the building's broken, on the first floor, is broken into two zones. The, the front entry lobby will be totally accessible to the public. And then what I'm calling the, the back of house space, everything up from there will be controlled via a doorway here. So, so anybody visiting the building, they'll need to be escorted to get to the back. The, the lobby is, is sized to seat approximately fifty people. There's a, there's an administration slash greeting wing that's similar setup to what they, what they have now. And also there's, uh, there's public, public bathroom facilities available to the, to the visitors within, within their space. Behind, behind those doors, there's five exam rooms, one laboratory.
Turn to the big engine. Oh, okay.
And you have two toilet, two toilet facilities here. Then it also has specimen collection capabilities, and there's, there are pass-throughs between the lab and the bathrooms for that. You also see that there's a, a refrigerated storage section. Storage is a, is a, is a large driver of this plan and a deficiency in their existing building, because they have a lot of, a lot of materials that go out to the public, as well as coming in in large, large bulk via large trucks, so. So this, this storage, refrigerated storage is for vaccines and, and clinical materials that need refrigerated storage. Then there's a, a small storage room here, which is more for, more for buil, building, building storage, materials that are gonna be used throughout the building. And then the large central storage with double doors that's accessible from the outside, that's, that's sized to allow for pallets of materials that get broken down and then distributed out to the community from there.
Kevin, if we, if we, if we could go back just a little bit on the, the, the reason for the generator is actually driven because the, the, the stuff that has to be kept cool, the vaccines and everything, as we know how important that is after the COVID stuff, and also that the clinical side has to be up and running, whether it has a, uh, whether Mike McGinnis from the power company is supplying them with electric where the generator is. So right now, Bill, the reason why you have the generator is not only for off-site, but on-site, if you lost power, you, you had to go out there and fire up things.
We used that during the duration we had when we were without electricity for almost a week or a day, I think. And then, um, and then when we're off, on off-site vaccination clinics, we have to keep our portable gen, portable coolers operational for everyone off of the portable generator.
But I mean, right now, you have kept things running in your building, on a portable generator.
Yes. Why would we not have a gener, why would you not include a generator in that cost?
He, he is. He is. Yeah.
The generator was on the site plan.
I'm just justifying.
Downstart that planning section.
I'm just justifying why.
Justifying why what?
I know, I gotta justify spending the money.
I got, here's the generator here. Any other questions on the first floor?
And, and adding the, the, um, storage rooms will actually allow us to no longer have to pay monthly rental on our controlled climate days that we have, so that'll also save the taxpayer money. We have three days as a basically rent count.
Second floor, man?
Well, yeah.
Second, second floor, that's gonna be accessible via card access only. So it's really, it's really for health department staff. It's not intended for, for, for public access. We have two, two office components up here. We've, we have, um, basically direct exercise offices along this wall. And then across the top, there are the nurse or staff offices. Uh, this floor is also served with a, um, with, with two toilet rooms, a, a break room for the staff to come up and spend their, spend their lunch, lunch hour and take the getaway. And also there's a, a conference room here that, that they can use for training, staff meetings, et cetera. The building does have elevator, elevator access. And that's, that's where you pretty much.
And, and the question's been brought up about why two-story versus one-story. It's simple, and the answer's simple, it's because of real estate.
What's that long skinny room right on the other?
This room here? That's the mechanical space.
Oh, okay.
So we actually, because the, the way the program laid out, we had to fill the floor plate, we had more program space on the first floor than we had on the second. And so this, the type of mechanical system that we're using here, VRF system, is, that's fairly, um, small components. So we were able to put that great centralized in the middle of the plan, and then they could just branch up and over and down and across, and it made for a very efficient mechanical.
What are the two rooms at the right end next to the elevator?
Oh, Kate, custodian, yeah, this is, this is a house cleaning, house cleaning space.
Couldn't read, couldn't read it on the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That two hundred and two square feet mechanical is Mr. Wise's space.
All right.
Yes, that's what I was getting, I was saying, Mr. Wise.
Get that room for us, Ken. So where does the health officer and?
On the left, in that blue.
Right.
You grab a side that, we, Roberts.
Is it gonna have just an office there and an office anywhere else or just there?
They'll just have it over in a second.
And where's your office?
Over the old building, existing.
What's the square footage?
Uh, total square footage is just under nine thousand square feet. It's buildingly sprinkled, I think fifty, fifty-five, fifty-six hundred on the first floor and the remainder on second floor.
Will be a sprinkled building?
It's a sprinkled building, yes. Yeah, we had to separate it, um, physically with wire barriers from the existing building because that one is not sprinkled, so.
What's the distance between the two buildings?
Um, approximately thirty feet.
Oh.
Yeah, it's not very far. We actually, because of the grade change, the, um, being able to get an ADA accessible ramp down between the two buildings really was the, the driver of, of that spacing.
And, and as you can see, the, the corridor has a lot of glass, so it makes you feel like you're, you're not going through the tunnel.
Right, right. This is the, this is the view that you would, would see entering from the existing building side. Again, it's the, the drop-off canopy, main canopy that leads directly into the, the waiting slash lobby. Um.
So the, the corridor would be limited ac- limited access?
That would be limited access, yes. Um, the building, the building's, all the door hardware on any space that, that needs limited access is gonna have card access hardware on it. So it'll be able to be programmed to, um, who has access to each and every end of the space.
Kevin, at one time, we talked about, and I think we did, maybe I'm wrong, I'm pretty sure we did, talking about the lobby having windows up higher.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, these, these lobby windows, similar to the day report center, the window sills are up four feet.
Are they?
So that somebody's sitting down.
Okay.
And this, keep in mind.
I was thinking the one over at day report center is up higher than that. I thought they were like five feet.
I think it looks high, it looks higher because the, the grade drops away.
Okay.
And this is gonna do a similar thing. The grades dropping, dropping away here. So if you're out here, the, uh, plaza slopes and then it's two steps down. Um, so you're gonna be, you're gonna be almost two feet lower than the floor line and then you're gonna be looking up. So you're not gonna be able to see.
I'm just laughing. The first time we went in, went down there, Alan and I walked in and back then they'd give students from Martinsburg High School or any student the brown bag.
Brown bag.
And Alan and I went in there, I said, I'm here to pick up my brown bag.
And I said, I'm not his partner.
Hey, Bill, how often do you get an ambulance to come in out there for anything?
Um.
Oh, I was gonna hear.
Okay. I was thinking where the, um, overhang is, the drop-off point, if that would be accessible to, be covered. An increment whether for an ambulance to back up there or anything, is that?
Well, we talked about that, only because this is one of the main parts we're going through. We was afraid trucks would take it off.
Okay.
You know, yeah, heavy trucks, big delivery trucks coming in there, you know, that's gonna take it. Because we didn't want that canopy to be too tall and, and defeat the purpose of driving rain and snow.
Okay.
And this, this car is probably put in an inopportune spot, but that, that rent slope ramp ADA accessory down to the pavement.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's located right here. So, so ambulance could pull right up to the curb and then they could.
Wheeling.
Right up that ramp and into the building and be, be covered, um, for the whole, whole journey.
And the reason that we felt that the canopy was very important was during the COVID, I can remember that Mrs. Towns was out there having to stand in the, in the rain or the snow, waiting to get inside for her test or her, her shot. And, and then it got to the point where you set it in vehicle ways. So this gives a little bit of protection for people to go in and out. As you know, she's in her nineties.
But also with our existing building now being vacated, it's gonna free up a couple two to three different offices that we talked about being available from the county should like someone was kind of in conjunction with health department that, that we did office space for them. So we're gonna have probably two or three of them as we, as we clear out the greens there.
Kind of like the harm reduction plan or something, right? That somebody's gonna be there conducting a, a, a session and maybe somewhere to work out.
Well, building materials, they're minimum maintenance materials that are designed to mimic the existing building. Um, brick over all of the exposed facade that's gonna match the existing building as close as we possibly can. Uh, window systems, it'll be aluminum painted window systems, again, the color to, to match. Then all the tr- all the trim is either a com- a composite metal panel system or, or a, a rat metal.
And it's gonna match, match the, the soffit faces on the building now.
Yeah, match soffit and face. You can see this is the existing building that we've kind of shaded or lightened up in the background. But the whole idea for this is to, is to look new and inviting, but also to, hey, not look out of place in, adjacent to the existing building and make it look like it's, it's been there and was part of the, part of the plan.
Man, this, this comes a long way from one twenty-seven West King Street, which is never over there. Three-story model of, of.
On King Street?
Yeah, the, 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 the planning commission building.
Yeah, the Powell School Hall, there's Powell School Hall, Health Department and, uh, what's his name's law office, Charlie Kaiser.
McCune.
No, no, the other way, Charlie Kaiser.
Oh, County, yeah.
Took down Charlie Kaiser's building and our building.
So across from one day.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where it used to stand.
So.
A parking lot now.
Yeah, it's a parking lot.
So I still, I, I still don't like the idea of having a shed outside. Why, why can't you, why can't you create a small garage off the side into that, into that large storage area of a little eight by eight area with a four-foot door or something, four-foot, uh, roll-up door or something like that to be able to have that as part of that? I mean, you.
You have a side, you have a north side elevation right there?
You just put a, uh, I mean, you just put fire coat drywall or, you know, create a fire area. I mean.
Ventilation is.
What, what is in that shed?
They have ventilation too.
Well, you just have, I mean, you have to seal, no different than a garage in a house, you know, you got, you got a seal.
Five eights.
Well, you can just think of it as a double. Brick facade. What about, what about if you leave, leave the brick facade right there where the staircase is or change it over to block on that back left corner and put an eight, eight by eight building there? Yeah. Or any of the windows are beside staircase, so it shouldn't affect that.
Right, add a little building there.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe just put a, a, a six O by swing door there somewhere.
What happened to the side, the sidewalk?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
The sidewalk would dig right into it.
All up, up to this point anyway.
It's either that or you go back, well, it's easiest to do it right there. So you add a free standing out there by the, by the generator.
I like that idea much better. Little existing shed cheaper. I, I get that. I get that, but you know what happens when you have one existing shed? Soon you'll have two existing sheds. They multiply.
I was surprised they didn't come back at you and say, yes, Mr. Davis, it is cheaper, but in the long run, I think the addition would be a little bit cheaper.
Yeah, I tell.
You'll have to buy a building every twenty years.
I tell, I tell everybody I deal with, nothing is cheap, so just get that out of your mind.
Best to overbuild it now and then build it and then add on to later on.
Don't you, don't you think it'd be better to have one little thing built on it?
I, I agree. I would have to work out a replacement. It's just an A, it's just a small ten thousand KWM portable generator and a couple of gas tanks.
Right, but you, and I'm sure from time to time, you could need something else that you don't.
I'm concerned about the gas being inside.
About what? It won't be, it won't be inside, it'd be completely different.
No, if you leave the block wall there and just attach a building to the side of it.
It, it wouldn't even be accessible from the inside.
Yeah, now you've got it, now you've got total separation between there.
Right, Eddie? Eddie, Eddie, at the time, right?
Mm-hmm.
Make it eight by twelve. Eight foot out, twelve foot deep.
Is that outside?
That would come just about right where the sidewalk is. That would take up that corner.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I would think you'd want it, yeah, just a little bit past the sidewalk myself.
Well.
The leg year. Sidewalk walks right into it.
We're gonna, we're gonna also want the building to step back a little bit. I mean, maybe twelve foot, start on the back corner and come forward because naturally if somebody's in that storage unit, we could never have that exit door obscured.
How big's that corridor? How many steps you got right there?
Well, that door. One, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I'm gonna say nine, so that's nine feet plus four foot, that's thirteen foot. At least thirteen.
Yeah, so you're probably fourteen foot, fifteen foot to the door, so twelve foot will get you there.
Just make, make sure that we don't, you know, if somebody's in there pulling the generator out and something happens inside, they still gotta get out that fire escape door.
Oh, absolutely.
I know.
Don't worry, I'm cold, Rick, you.
I'm just saying.
Why don't you make it?
I want, I want questions. I didn't mean it that way. I just, that, that we're thinking about that.
Doug, why not, why not, why not just come eight foot from the back corner forward and go out twelve foot? And that way you're, your sidewalk's in the exact center of that little area.
That'd be fine.
And then you can put the door right there.
Or, or anything. This way?
Yes, twelve foot that way.
Off the back corner, yeah.
Gives you a little bit of space there to work with. A little bit more sidewalk.
That'll give you five foot or something in there. And just concrete up where you're from.
Here's Bill's sheds, just so you can see.
Yeah, it went from one to three. I did go back out there yesterday, the day before, looked at the grade for the pond and stuff. Even if we had to get water in that pond, I believe we could still get water from the front out and direct back to the back, but the, the pond is only sized currently right now for the addition, is that right?
Yeah, the new development.
And since it's just the building water, does it have to have water quality?
Um, it does.
Okay.
It does. It's some Virginia state requirement. I mean, first Virginia, I'm sorry.
Yeah, don't, don't put Virginia.
Yeah, they, they told, they told me bird poop on the roof and that kind of stuff.
Bird shit everywhere.
Yeah, yeah. You could filter that out. I'm like, really? Why do you start worrying about that?
Yeah, no, all the, all the roof drain is going to be there.
All right.
Any other comments? What's the cost of this thing?
Uh, we have a project budget of, what's it, three, we're estimating at three, three million.
So Dan just, Dan just took up two hundred thousand dollars for.
He's building for that?
In today's world, it's three hundred dollars square foot.
So are we going to, are we going to increase the pond size to do parking in between on the other side of the building like we talked about?
No, not right now. I think if we did parking on the other side of the building, I think that may go towards the south side a little bit. That'd be in conjunction with property on our side.
Well, you could draw, do a crop, drop in that runs down behind there or something.
So what do you think, Bill? Does it meet all your future needs for fifty years?
I, yeah, um, I think it's a, I think it's a good looking future.
Now, what, when this is built, what do you have to do to the existing buildings?
Um, deconstruct the.
What about the sanitarians?
They're going to be where the nurses are at now, or, or we would have, if we have any.
Yeah.
Um, so they'll be where the nurses are at, um, Karen's office where Nurse Director was. Um, so all the clinic rooms are basically gonna be surplus this, this office space there. The X-ray room probably just be a storage room because nobody would want an office in there.
Um, the, um, the environmental clerk's office, does that stay in there?
They'll stay there. Um, the admin assistant, they will be over where the clinical clerks are now. Um, double offices will be singled up, so office be where Karen's is at. So it'll be open back up. The communities, the community room will still be the community room for the public. It'll be, yeah, actually set back up that way as soon as we, as we transition out of the pandemic. So it's, it's looking way into the future of what Bill ran out. But we didn't think the building now is gonna be a problem, a square footage either, but.
Yeah, I never.
And looking at us increasing our census beyond what Ronald Trump stood as at some point in the future, near future, I think you're gonna need more people. I think, I think this goes along with it. But also it's here for more real estate, if you ever have to do it.
What do you allow your community room to be used for?
Pretty much any nonprofit, uh, they use them for hearing judges that's come down from the state, um, AP, they use them for, um, the older chronic disease self, self-management groups to use every week. Um, pretty much anybody gets with us, we can set the alarm after they leave remotely and it's locked off and the rest of the health department, so it's well set up for the community.
Yeah, and the reason I'm asking.
No private, no private entity can use it, uh, as far as like profit.
Yeah, and the reason I'm asking is like, you know, the, the family protection, they don't have place, so they meet at the, at the, um, at the development authority office, you know, but sometimes it's conflict and, you know, so they change their meeting or, or the roundhouse meets. And, um, I, I know they can go out to the airport, but I never even, I, I've been in that area before and I've never even gone on them.
It's, it's got, it's got IT capabilities and it's well set up. We're gonna have, we're putting a smart TV in there soon. Gary's working with us on doing. Um, but it's well used for, we don't allow it to be used for private margins, for the party.
Right, right, right. I get that. Yeah, and I was just thinking like board meetings for some of these nonprofits that do that, cause.
Bring them over to the jail.
Huh?
Bring them to the jail.
Bring them to jail?
Okay.
Oh, over there. That's what I did. I didn't think about that.
He's afraid to walk in that building.
Huh?
I said, you're afraid to walk in that building.
They never closed the door behind me. They never closed the door behind me. I did have, I did have to wait one time, about an hour for Dingler to show up.
All right, so anybody, everybody okay with this? And Bill, you need to do anything with it before we put it on the street?
Kevin's been absolutely great to work with and, uh, I think it changes to, it's changed to minimal impact, but, um.
And we try to, and Kevin and company always tries to make sure we cover all of our bases. We've been very happy, uh, with, you know, getting everything out in front to where the new, uh, new change orders, um, and, uh, that's one, and, and they always manage the project as it's going, so worked out really well.
The RFP is done. Um, Kevin and Tracy and I have been working on that for a past week or so. Um, I'm just, wow. I mean, I know you still have to work on the drawings and things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
But the, the narrative. But, I mean, Gary's got, you've gotta get him some.
They have him.
Oh, he's got him. So, I mean, if the council blesses this today, we'll probably get the RFP out tomorrow.
Well, they just added a saddle, dude.
Whenever.
I need a week.
Whenever, whenever Kevin catches up, we'll get the RFP, we'll get the RFP out.
And, and Dan, Dan and I have been talking up here quietly, but the, the pond, and that's why I was talking to Kevin, the pond right now is area designated, area is sized large enough just for the addition. Um, and I think, I was telling Dan right now, that's all, but I think we need, um, there are very few ex- place, places there that we could add to the parking lot. If we did, we, you know, Dan's right though. It's sort of like we're talking with the possibility of the solid waste. If you're gonna, if you think you're ever gonna increase the impervious. increase the impervious area, now's the time to make the pond big enough to do additional stuff. So. That can be everybody's decision or, but there's very little space there to increase anything.
You can see that triangle is your property.
Right, now pond's gonna take, that pond and that addition taking up eighty percent of it.
Yeah, but I could see where you could run right along the whole side of that road and put a, put parking spaces, pull in parking spaces in behind that building all the way back there, yeah. Yeah.
Well, there's sewer lines and stuff there, I, cause I asked Kevin about the pond, cause the pond should have been in that triangle, but the sewer line, sewer main and stuff going through there. And I think maybe another utility, um.
Well, we pushed the, we purposely pushed the re- the basin back to the property line.
Right. So comes.
From a setback standpoint, it occupies that area and it maximizes the, the remaining areas.
You, you see what I'm saying though, don't you? I mean, you could easily, you could probably easily come off this road here and create some parking down to here.
I would think, I would think the city of Martinburg would fight you on that.
Not, not being a dead end, but that, I doubt that. Not with the good working relationship you have with the city.
Parking's never really been an issue out there.
No, not currently.
And I think even with the addition.
We can, we can parallel park in the streets there.
I was talking pulling it.
So once Kevin makes the changes, is the council okay with us getting this out on the street?
Yeah.
Mr. Barnhart, in answer to your question, three, roughly three million dollars. Health Department has already contributed seven fifty.
State.
Community Development grant, six oh eight eight oh two. So the council's share would be roughly six, one point seven million.
It's quarter, square footage again, Kevin, nine thousand.
Eight thousand nine hundred and ninety.
Eight thousand, wait a second.
I bet Bill's got a little more, we could probably squeeze even more.
Well.
Divided by eight thousand.
Do a little horse trading in the design anyway, because initial design had all the furnishings being provided as well. So we're gonna squeeze a little bit about our, well, some of the bill to take off the furniture.
They're gonna pay for all the furniture.
So right now, it's three hundred thirty-five dollars a square foot. And that could be a little bit on the white side in today's cost.
Do you have an X-ray room in this thing?
You don't use that anymore.
We have been opening schedules, we'll push that back.
I don't know how much water that would get you.
Was I in?
If, if you shrunk this.
Calls away. Rejoining Breeze Way.
They can't do it for ADA.
You gotta have so much, you gotta have, you gotta have one inch per foot for a ramp, for ADA ramps.
This is a ramp?
Yeah. Yeah, the buildings, the left building is two foot lower than the high.
All the regulations, well.
Isn't that what he said, it was two foot lower?
Yeah, it's two feet lower.
And you don't realize it until you stay out of the parking lot.
So you gotta have twenty-four foot of ramp space, but you, by code, I think you can only go twenty foot, and then you gotta flatten it out and, and then.
For a resting spot.
Yeah, and rest after twenty, isn't that what it is?
Yeah, and we do, we've, we've got a small ramp on this portion, and there's a, a square landing, and then you ramp down again.
Right.
To the doorway.
Right.
I guess we also, I mean, the, the link was advantageous because the existing building isn't sprinkled and we need to have building separation. We budded the building, great exit to this building, then we've been forced to go in and replace the, take the ceilings down, we install a sprinkler system throughout the whole building.
Yeah, that separation, to my knowledge, would only require ten foot separation between the structures.
True.
But, but you still won't be able to get your ADA compliant.
Can't, that's my point, you can't block the buildings together.
Right.
Alright, everybody.
If Bill's happy, and I assume all your staff, what's remaining of it, is okay.
And once this gets the final blessing, then that ownership board, they've already heard, obviously, and transferred the funds, so.
Bill's always happy.
Not always.
Alright, so that was my question earlier. If, if Kevin's ready to go in two weeks, and we've already given the blessing to put it on the street, do you need anything to do before we hit the street? Be good to go, alright. Okay.
I asked Kevin, he spent, um, the past three hours, or seven hour, hour or so.
I have a question, I was, I was just talking with Jack, we have an issue of lighting? The parking lot lighting? When you look at the park, you had it up there a while ago, the parking lot split off. The north, yeah, north pole is partial on our controlling part, or the church's control. Arms on both of those lights in the parking lot are under the, under the control of the church. Only the center portion's under control of the health department.
So it's a south pole there, not north?
But in the, in the evenings, the parking lot is very dark. We don't have it lit. And I think with the security cameras, it probably should have some kind of lighting. So I don't know whether additional poles can be put up or what, but we need to have something dedicated lighting.
If you can come up with an addition to hundred fifty thousand a night.
So, so.
I'd be happy to just change the arm and the light.
What do you? What do you do?
Why not just throw LEDs up there? So, so, um.
Give me bigger LEDs?
No, the, if.
Sheep boxes?
Huh?
Just on the pole?
They make, they make a pole light that has a solar panel on the top of it, an LED, and it, it'll last. I mean, it'll last probably till one, two o'clock in the morning. And it just comes on automatically and shuts off, you can mount them to the poles that you don't have control over, and they would be on all the time.
Well, how about this? How about if, how about if?
And they're a hundred bucks a piece or something.
How about if they just, how about if they just put, uh, between us and the health department, pay to put LED lights on the poles and ask, since we're gonna absorb the expense. The, the church can absorb the electric bill, be a little bit, be less than what they're paying now.
Well, I think that's what he's saying.
We, we're already having electricity to those poles, if we could just put a lamp on there, the react, or arm with the LED on there, we control that.
So you got power going to a pole that you don't control?
We have light, we have power going to both those poles.
Okay.
We only control the center little light on there, the church controls both arms out on both of those poles.
Okay, yeah.
Jack, do they have the LED heads and litters?
Not deep.
Not like we have.
Yeah, we want to upgrade down.
Well, I was wondering if we could take, if he's got a, a hot wire in the center, why couldn't we hook in other two and make it all, it's all one way?
Just, just, just run all three of them on us instead of them?
Yeah.
Well, actually, you can bypass the bals and put LED bulbs in. You only have to buy the fixture.
Well, this building's gonna be retrofitted with new controlled lighting, we just put new controlled LEDs and done.
Alright. Alright, Kevin, we're gonna do something with that exterior lighting. We can do that ourselves.
Yeah, we will.
We can do it all. We can. Over on, over on this side, the canopies will, will all be lit, so that'll limit quite a bit of light on that side of the parking lot. Yeah.
Some preliminary thoughts on the addition to the day report center? We started discussion within the past month on that.
Yeah, I sat down with Tim and, um, just reviewed his program, and it appears as though he has two functions that are, are at capacity right now, that's his, that's his group, group rooms. And large gathering spaces, as well as his case managers. Um, so he came, he came to us a couple of weeks ago with a, with a little diagram of what he was, what he was envisioning. Um, and I gave a quick glance at that and, and brought it to scale. And what we talked about today was a, an addition that's approximately double the size of what the existing building is. Approximately, um, thirteen thousand square feet. It would include four new group rooms with the subdivisible, um, partitions in the middle, so that they have the, the multipurpose and the, the flexibility to use those spaces in different ways. A large gathering room, which they, which is even larger than two open rooms now. Um, approximately sixteen hundred square feet, where you can have his entire existing staff, anticipated future staff. As well as, um, some outside guests for presentations, meetings, updates. Um, and that was about sixteen, sixteen hundred square feet. Uh, the bathrooms on the existing facility are currently, we, we, we have more capacity there than what the current building, um, requires, but with this addition, we're gonna need, uh, a couple more toilets probably. Per, per gender, so there's a, there's a new bathroom space. Um, it's anticipated to be a, a two-story addition, addition, so we're gonna need stairwells on each side, plus, plus an elevator. Uh, the second floor, I guess much like the health department, would just be off, office space. Uh, we laid out space for twenty, um, case manager sized spaces, which are ten by twelve offices, a director's space. Uh, a conference room for, for a dedicated conference room for staff, and, um, and then their own, um, their own toilets and, and, um, cleaning and, and storage spaces, so it's two, two floors of approximately sixty-five hundred square feet.
We have a lot of utilities that run through there, if you know, the, the city put their stormwater.
Discharge.
Discharge right there, and I think there's other utilities that run through.
Yeah, and some storm drains, the, the, the gas and the water basically come right through where the extension would be. So, um, my, my recommendation is to, uh, need a, need a survey as soon as possible to identify the locations of all these. Again, and, um, so the plan around it, we don't want to create any, any, before we get too far down the road.
And you're talking about that right here, like, um?
I'm talking about, yes, this area here, sorry, I didn't realize you had that up. Yeah, the gas come, comes in here and the water comes in here. The fire connection for the building, for the fire departments on that end of the building.
What is this, is that the generator sitting out there in the parking lot? What is that, a pump station or something?
Pump station.
With a generator.
With a generator. And you don't want it backing up in there.
But the pumps are underground there, there's a couple, there's a couple of old pits here that, that, that go down. So we need to understand what the extent of those are and what the, what their, what the setback is for them and how far we need to stay away.
Is that for the, is that for the, the property or is that for the city?
That city Mars, we put that in.
Oh, it's been.
Within the past ten years.
They got a right away for that?
They just, they just took it.
They got a Neesman.
We could have them move it.
Doug's not here, so we're not gonna do that.
So you'll be hearing more about that as we go forward.
Didn't it, it cut right through Boydville, didn't it? Underneath and then over and down, across King Street, comes out behind your house.
What's that, sewer?
No, it's not sewer.
Stormwater. Oh, yeah, yeah, it comes right down, comes right out of their entrance, didn't they go right down their driveway or something?
Sure did. Expand that a little bit there, Gary. Boydville's right there. Follow the driveway right out.
Cuts right on an angle off the driveway all across the street.
And then down that alley.
Down that Leesum Street.
Yep, right over into there somewhere.
Probably goes right down Downton Creek down there.
Tuscarora, doesn't it?
Alright, Kevin, go answer it. I haven't danced since my wedding. And that wasn't pretty.
Anything else, Kevin?
I'm all set, if you are.
How are we coming with that building?
Where receiving went back and. Set up and, set up, set up them, set up the median.
Could have three big projects one time next year.
So when does the health department, everything continues on, when would you start to help the public?
We've, we've been working on it, so.
No, I mean, construction.
Oh, construction, um. Well, assuming the, assuming the approximately six to eight week bid and contract period, um, of two months from now.
And how long do you think it takes to build it?
Um, that's always a difficult thing, where we're gonna give them eight months. Um, but in, 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 in this climate, there's, there's a hundred and one ways contractors use to create delays.
Easy, easy. I said be easy.
So. March thirty first.
Yeah, that's not happening. You'd be lucky if you can get your doors by then. That is a good point, though, is there any, in the design, is there any real specialty items that are going to be difficult to get?
What is?
VRF. HVAC, six day month.
Six day month.
We insist on all that, all that to be ordered and shock drawings developed immediately upon the order contract. The building structure itself is a wood frame building, we've tried to make it as, with as many readily accessible materials as possible. Steel's a big issue. Windows, windows are a challenge, depending on what's manufacturing, go, go to.
So they're not, they're not typical, uh, uh, they're not typical, uh, like storefront windows or?
They are.
Oh, okay.
They are, but.
So they, I mean, they're just buying the channels then, and if they manufacture most of that.
Yeah, we try to open it up so that there's, we have Conneer and YKK and FCO that are specs around, so. I mean, they, they come back and contractors, it's that we can't get, you can't get them, and then you push back and they go to another supplier and find them. But it's, it's just, it's just a challenge. Okay, Mr. Baker.
Done? Alrighty, thank you very much, and.
You all.
Mr. Barnhart? Any ideas from the public?
Any public?
Any public? No public, all good. Mr. Barnhart?
President, Mr. Vice President, from town, or your vice president. Mr. Vice President, I'm being recessed.
We are recessed.